Before meeting the Oshkosh Common Council, the city clerk could please take the role.
Bilo?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Esslinger?
Here.
Flohm?
Here.
Mughelbauer?
Here.
Seven present.
Uh, councilman, excuse me, deputy mayor Bilo will lead us in the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Absolutely. We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up this evening, we have some introduction of some new staff or staff in new positions. I'll start with Ms. Colmas will introduce one of her new employees.
Excellent.
Hello, I am excited to introduce the newest member of the finance department, Betsy Anderson. Betsy is the financial utility manager. She has a bachelor's degree in management information systems from Lakeland University, complemented by associate's degrees in web development and programming and graphic design. Betsy's career journey is a testament to her versatility and expertise across multiple domains. She has an impressive array of experiences including changing oil, office management, customer service, payroll, and accounting. Outside of work, she enjoys spending quality time with her family, walking her dog, and attending concerts. Betsy's hobbies include swimming, riding dirt bikes, and playing the piano and guitar. Betsy was born and raised in Orange County, California, and moved to Wisconsin in 2012. She recently moved to Oshkosh from Sheboygan, Wisconsin, and is excited to get involved with the Oshkosh community. Betsy?
Thank you, Julie. I'm excited to be here and I'm honored that the city of Oshkosh has selected me to be the new utility manager. And I'm looking forward to working with each department and helping in any way I can.
Well, welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
I expect our financial reports to be more beautifully designed now that with a with a graphic design.
They may have some oil smudges on them.
Good evening, mayor and members of the common council. I'm excited to be before you yet again with some additional staffing announcements for you. These staffing announcements are continuation of the organizational improvements that we have been working on in the field operations area of the Department of Public Works. It's my pleasure, first of all, tonight to introduce you to the newly promoted street supervisor, Joe Cuff. Joe started with the city as an equipment operator in the street division in June of 2009. Starting in the summer of 2013, Joe became one of our seasonal lead construction workers. In January of '24, Joe became a full-time lead equipment operator and has enjoyed the challenge thus far. In 2002, Joe married his wife Abby and together they have three beautiful girls. Joe serves on the town of El Dorado Town Board where he is seated as supervisor one. In his spare time, Joe likes to spend time on his UTV, snowmobiling, and working on his project truck. Joe's thankful for this opportunity and excited for this new challenge and is looking forward to continuing to serve the city of Oshkosh in this new role. Joe, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, short and sweet. Thanks for your opportunity. I'm excited. We are heading the right spot. So, thanks again. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you, mayor and common council members. Our second introduction tonight. I'm very happy to introduce you to the newly promoted street supervisor, Brian Trelevan. Brian started with the city as an equipment operator in street division in 2013 in December. Starting in the summer of 2016, Brian became one of the seasonal lead construction workers. In January of 2024, Brian became a full-time lead equipment operator. Brian currently lives in the city of Amro and is married with one stepson. When Brian's not working, he enjoys the outdoors, hunting, fishing, and spending time on the water. Brian is also an officer on the Amro Rushford Volunteer Fire Department and is a member of their emergency medical responders. Brian is looking forward to these new challenges that the position offers and continuing to grow with us at the city. So, Brian?
Just like Joe said, thanks for the opportunity. We're excited to get going and looking forward to working with all of you.
Congratulations.
Both Brian and Joe have started their new responsibilities as supervisors effective this past Monday, so they are currently in their new roles. Thank you.
I think it's fantastic. We've got new leaders within our organization, but also that they're finding ways to give back on their personal time. Elected official, volunteer firefighter and first responder, you know, just says a lot about your character and says a lot about the people we're trying to hire in here in the city of Oshkosh. So, well done and welcome to all of you to the organizational ranks and to the new supervisor roles. Next up, we had a couple proclamations that were issued electronically or mailed out in advance. We had one for the Oshkosh Freemasons who are celebrating their 175th anniversary here coming up very shortly, as well as the Masonic Center's 100th anniversary. And then there's a rail safety one for the National Sea Trax Train Week in later September. That's just letting you know that those were issued. Next up, we have a presentation. I think Fitz might be leading this one off a little bit for us.
Sure. I'm happy to introduce Lee Jaborski. He is a consultant with GovHR, MGT GovHR, and he'd like to just talk to you a little bit about the, what he does for them and the potential recruitment that we're considering moving forward with. So, Lee? Whatever you're comfortable with.
All right.
Welcome.
Thank you. Is this?
Should be good. Should be on.
All right. So, I appreciate the chance to talk with you about the city manager recruitment and tell you a little bit about our firm, a little bit about myself, and our process. John said I had about an hour and a half. Does that sound about right?
It sounds more right for him.
Okay. About 10 minutes or so, is that good?
Sounds more right.
So, let me tell you a little bit about, you know, our company, which is GovHR, soon to be called MGT, but in one form or another, our executive recruitment firm, which began by a city manager, has been in one form or another for around for over 50 years or so. So, and we're based in Northbrook, Illinois. I'm based in Mecklenburg, Wisconsin. So, and I reflect similar to everybody in the firm that at one time or another, we've worked for local government. So, I've been with GovHR for the last 10 years or so, but prior to that, I spent over 30 years working for local governments. My most recent gig was city administrator in Mecklenburg. And, you know, it's with that experience, me and my colleagues are, I think, are able to bring a very good understanding of what local governments are looking for, how you operate, and to bring that special understanding to recruitment of this magnitude or so. We are, our reach is nationwide, but, you know, we've got Midwest roots and would apply that basis to this recruitment if we're so lucky as to get the engagement here. We're pleased to be able to work with the city of Oshkosh. If it breaks that way, you've got a high-quality organization and community, you know, Mark's reputation within the profession is solid. It speaks a lot about professional council manager form of government as well as, you know, speaks to the community. That is going to, you know, certainly be a strong selling point for candidates that would consider this as their next home or so. And so, not only Mark's reputation, but I'm acquainted with a number of your staff, you know, having done some previous work for the city. And you present, you know, a solid, very professional organization. Council manager form of government here in Oshkosh has been around for a while and, you know, there's not too many within the state of Wisconsin that present that. And so, that will also be, you know, a strong attraction to candidates here. Oshkosh, in terms of your organization, is, you know, is a go-to source, you know, for a lot of other, you know, folks, not only in the city management profession, but, you know, throughout the, throughout the other organizations, other departments, you know, that all your department heads represent. You know, again, you're on financial solid ground and, you know, present a really great profile for the recruitment effort for your next city manager. Our process would include about a 14-week process, kicking off with an understanding of, you know, what all of you are looking for, and that's done through a number of stakeholder meetings that, you know, I would conduct, you know, with all of you, with your department heads, and perhaps some community stakeholders that you would think would be important to draw into the process or so. You know, we begin there, then develop a profile, begin our outreach for that, you know, which is about a five-week period of time. And then we move into our due diligence phase. And that includes a number of different ways in which, you know, we discern the quality of the candidates, you know, that we're taking a closer look at. You know, we do some initial reference checks, background checks. I will conduct a one-hour Zoom interview individually with each of the candidates that I would move forward here so that, you know, that gives me as best possible knowledge of each of those candidates' backgrounds and are they able to provide examples of what they have described on paper that their experience is. And to focus on what you're going to tell me in the beginning is important to you. So, for example, likely I may hear from you that maintaining, you know, a strong fiscal position is important, you know, particularly in, you know, in our state in which there's not a lot of sources of, you know, of revenue, but that's maybe important. Having a city manager with economic development experience may be important to you as well. And then somebody that, you know, can certainly, you know, manage a workforce, you know, as large and diverse as yours is. So, those are the things that you may tell me upfront will be important for me to be on the lookout for, you know, and as I do our due diligence, that's what I'll focus on. Then we take it from there to, you know, present to all of you portfolio of candidates in which you'll make a decision on who you would like to interview. And then we pretty much, you know, handle the whole interview process from there. If you would like us to, you know, at the tail end of the process, we will serve as your agent in which to negotiate an employment agreement with your next city manager. So, that's the, that's the process. In short, say about, you know, 14 weeks or so, we kick off, say, right after Labor Day. I would say you would probably be in a position to, having made your selection for your next city manager around the holidays, with that person taking off is most likely around right after January 1st or so. I'll stop there and see if there's any questions I can answer.
Any questions now or otherwise, once it comes up for the resolution, we can also address them then as well. Councilmember?
Yeah, I think I just, I just have two questions. I guess the first one, just in terms of, thank you for your presentation. In terms of the size of Oshkosh, where do we kind of rank in the size of cities that you represent through this process? Are we a big, are we a big community or a small community compared to others that you've recruited city managers for?
Yeah, I mean, we've done recruitments, you know, anywhere from communities of 1,000 to over a million. We've done work for, for example, out of state, say, city of Austin. I've worked for the city of Arlington, Texas. But inside, and probably most akin to Oshkosh, I recently did the city administrator recruitment in Waukesha.
Okay. That's very helpful. And then I guess my second question is, do you only bring us candidates who have applied for the position? Or do you, you will go out and find the best one and we'll, we'll take them from somebody else?
Yeah, you know, as we dig down to the outreach part of the engagement, you know, we'll employ many of the tools that you can expect. You know, it's the advertising, it's the using social media. We have a huge presence on LinkedIn. But the other part, and probably the most important part about executive recruitment, is for me to identify candidates that are not even looking. And I can give you an example of that. And it was Waukesha, for instance. Tony Brown was the city administrator in Port Washington. I said, Tony, let's have lunch. I have something to talk with you about. And so, you know, I do that with many folks. You know, tap them on the shoulder and say, hey, I'd like to highlight an opportunity for you. Let's talk. So, that's a big part of it.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yeah, I thank you for the presentation. I know Tony Brown, so he'll be a really good fit there. So, glad you found a good person in that area. I'm hopeful we can find a good person here. I know Mark is going to leave some pretty big shoes. We're all sad that he's leaving, but I can say that I, I'm excited for this process. I'm excited for us to kind of really have a front-facing, community-oriented process that we can really find the next person to take the helm. So, thank you for the presentation and I look forward to working with you guys.
If there's nothing else right now, if you wouldn't mind maybe sticking around till we get to that resolution, just in case there's more questions?
You bet.
Thank you. It shouldn't take too long, I don't think, to get to that point of the agenda. Next up, we have one more presentation on tax increment district number 44 Northwest Oshkosh Expansion Area. Ms. Nyfor?
Excellent. Thank you. I believe everybody has the presentation in the council packet, but we do have it up here on the screen too. So, we're going to talk today about the proposed TID 44, which is in our northwest section of the city. This is something that council and staff have been discussing for a while, mainly because this is one of our growth areas. And we finally kind of put the perfect equation together to come up with a solution to encourage growth in this area. So, this is going to have no action tonight. This is just a kind of giving you some more information, and I will follow up with this meeting and send you an electronic link for the full project plan so you can start reviewing that before it comes back to council on August 27th. So, this would be the city's first mixed-use TID. This is something that many other communities have across the state of Wisconsin, but this would be the city's first one. And as you see in the aerial photo, we are focusing on the northwest section of the city near the I-41, US Highway 45 interchange. We've identified just under 400 acres that would be eligible to be included in the TID. And what we're really going to be focusing on is municipal infrastructure improvements and, you know, items that are needed to provide growth for developments in this area. So, a little bit about mixed use, but it's, they have very strict guidelines, the State Department of Revenue does. So, we have different thresholds that we have to meet. It's shorter than our, some of our other TIDs that we're used to. It's only 20 years. And currently, there are over 500 mixed-use TIDs in the state of Wisconsin. So, this is not a new concept, but I will say it's being used more and more throughout the state as more folks. This is really one of the few TIF tools that we can use for housing. Obviously, this is not just about residential housing because you see in here, we do have limits, but housing is a component. So, a lot of different municipalities are taking advantage of it. So, this is a little bit different. This is typically more new construction. This really, this isn't something we'd be using for like reconstruction throughout the city where there might be assessments or anything. This is for new construction where we're encouraging growth in an area that does not have infrastructure currently. And that's where the TIF kind of but for comes in. But for us not installing this infrastructure and using this TID as a funding mechanism, there would be no development in the area. So, why TIF? This is our comprehensive plan map. This is our looking ahead, our comp plan, our 2040 land use plan. We use this every single day in planning. And I will add that this map is used by a lot of other departments in the city, so it's very important to the city. When, for instance, when the fire department was looking for facilities, maybe new stations, we met with them and we talked about this. This is where we see growth in our community, so they consider that. When Public Works is looking at all the utility plans, we share information with them as far as this is where there's going to be residential growth. This is where there's going to be industrial growth. And the same even goes for the school districts and our county and other federal agencies too. So, it's very important that, you know, we use this and we look at it and we're planning ahead. And that's exactly what we're doing here today. If you look on here, you see a lot of yellow. That's residential. But you also see some pink and some browns, and that's mixed use and that's industrial. So, there's a nice mix. Of course, right by the interchange there, that's where you're going to see the commercial and the industrial, but as you go beyond that, that's where the residential is. So, that's just smart planning right there where you kind of have that buffer on the main highways, made thoroughfare, thoroughfares, and then you have residential behind there. So, we're really looking at, this is one of our few growth areas because Oshkosh, we love our water and we love our water features, but it does block us in. And then we also have some boundary agreements with three of our surrounding townships also. So, our growth areas are limited. So, we, staff believes that we have an opportunity that we're going to talk about today that we really need to take advantage, that will position ourselves very well for the next 40, 50 years. And when I talk about utilities, I call it a backbone, just to kind of make an analogy, but really, we need to put in some important infrastructure that will connect to existing infrastructure, that will loop our services to provide safe and reliable service. And we're not talking about laterals, we're talking about those mains, the main component of our utility expansion that we would like to use this TIF as kind of be the vehicle to give us the funding to install that. And then as developments would come along, they would be responsible for the laterals and connect to the backbone that the city has constructed. And here are our TIF boundaries. As you see on here, it's, like I said, very centered into that interchange area. There's about 40 parcels. And just so you know, none of the parcels that are going to be included in the TID are currently residential, like a residential home or personal home. They're all industrial, multifamily, they're vacant, so kind of a mix. But right now, you know, that's kind of the makeup of what's out there right now. There's no overlapping TIDs in the area. We go into near our northwest industrial park a little bit, but there's currently not a TID in that place right now. And these boundaries are very deliberate as we're trying to follow the DOR guidelines. There's a reason why it looks that way, but we made the numbers work and we worked with our partners at LRS to make sure that they also agreed with us, and they do. So, now, when we're looking at the boundaries, we also consider the potential projects. Up on here, you'll see it says potential a lot, but there are some that, as you see for one Lake Buttermore, that's under construction right now. And then on the other side of I-40, or excuse me, US Highway 45 near County Road T, we're in very regular contact with those developers. So, we have some projects that discussions are much further along than others, and some it's just we see it as opportunities. So, we had to do some forward thinking and take a look of what, you know, certain areas could, could develop to and, you know, what potential value might be there. And I'm, I'll preface by saying we're very conservative with these numbers. We don't want to put ourselves in a position where we, you know, think a little too aggressively and, you know, maybe get ourselves into a little trouble. We're very conservative and we have it phased to make sure that we have the funds and we have the increment being generated to pay back. So, when we are looking at these potential projects, we'd also have to look at how much new value would these projects create. So, $162 million is the figure that we came up, of course, as an estimate. I can guarantee that's not going to be the number that we'll see at the end of the day in 20 years, but it's the best we had right now where we worked with our assessors division. And we did look out, like I said, 10 years on here of some of the different residential, industrial, commercial, and of course, Lake Buttermore for that multifamily development. We had actually very specific information because we just did a TID analysis for them last summer. So, now we're looking at the utilities. This is really the main reason why we are looking at this TID. The first picture is the blue that is our water facilities that are existing, and the green are our sanitary sewer facilities. And in there, you'll see that they kind of, you know, go through the residential areas right now. They really do not go over to the developers that we're talking about, talking to on the east side of I-45 and even to the north of there. And we also need some services to be looped. I'm not going to pretend to be an engineer, but I know that loop services are important just so it's, it's important to keep the water going especially, and then of course, sanitary, there, you need to make sure that you have the facilities in place to make sure it keeps moving. So, there's quite a few improvements needed in this area based off the potential projects that we know of right now and that have been identified even before the projects that we're talking, the developers we're talking to, even before they came in. These recommendations have been in the plans that our Public Works Department puts together for all of our utilities for future infrastructure needed for the city. So, looking at here, you know, what will the TID help with? So, these are some specific projects we worked with Public Works on, and you'll see on here there's a half-mile buffer. The state DOR allows us to use the increment that is generated in the district within a half-mile of that district. But the infrastructure that we install, it has to directly impact or it has to, I guess, be important to the district. So, we were very methodical when we were going through. We made sure that all the costs were just within that half-mile buffer. And looking at that, you'll see there's water main loop up on County Road Y, and that will connect over. We have some other sanitary in there also, but you also, so we see we have some pedestrian trails. As more people are going to be out in that area, we need more safe pedestrian areas. We have the Weowash Trail, of course, but we would love to have some more connections out there and sidewalks, of course, too. So, those were some of the, the projects that we put in there, and then we came up with the estimate of it and then tried to figure out, will all these costs, will there be enough increment generated to pay for it over the life of 20 years? So, with that, we came up with over $44 million of the project costs. And looking at that $162 million in new value, we do have enough increment that would be generated, new value, that would pay for those project costs over the life of 20 years. In addition to that, there's up to $18 million of potential incentives. Now, this is unallocated increment, so we just put it under as potentially like PEGO development incentives. And of course, if that was, if a developer was ever interested in that, they would go through our normal TIF request process where they'd be coming to council. They're most likely to be a closed session. So, but right now, we're just kind of putting that it's unallocated, but there is funds there if needed. And this is a little bit more detailed about the different phases that we are looking at for the infrastructure. So, we want to make sure that as the increment is being generated, that we have enough funds for what we would need to borrow for, that we have enough funds to pay back our debt. So, next steps are this, the project plan and the boundary will come back to council at your next meeting on August 27th. After that, the joint review board will meet a second time on September 5th. We already have that meeting set. And then if everything is approved, we will send it down to the state for them to certify it here in September. And of course, as I mentioned, moving forward, this is a city-initiated TID. So, this is very similar to like what we did on TID 35, the Oshkosh Avenue Corridor, where we knew there's going to be quite a bit of development, but we also knew that we had some utility needs and some infrastructure costs, one being the Sawyer-Oshkosh Ave intersection reconstruction. We knew that at some time, we'd probably need to work on some of the utilities on Oshkosh Ave. So, that's also a city-initiated one where we knew there was development coming, so we thought it would be, you know, good to capture some of that increment to help offset some of those costs from just regular borrowing that we could use the TIF to help, as a conduit to help fund those. And again, the JRB, that is all the taxing jurisdictions, so they will all weigh in on it and discuss it. And like I said, it's, it's something that we've been talking about for a while, is our growth area for housing, for residential, multifamily, industrial. And we think we have an opportunity here with some, one- And we think we have an opportunity here with some, one project that's in the ground and then another one that's really, you know, very, very interested to take advantage of some of that increment to help grow our city for the future.
One thing I would add, if Kelly, go back to, if you go back to where you had the long-range land use plan for 2040. You see the TIF boundaries there in the black, but there is a great deal of area to the north. This, and I think I gave the term the backbone, the backbone infrastructure will poise us to get that development to the north. And that's, when we're talking about housing development, that won't be included in the TIF. So the advantage of it is we'll have that development available because we've made this infrastructure pretty much to the front door. We haven't done a lot of infrastructure TIFs in recent years. It's mostly been the Pago variety, but for redevelopment project, that's exactly what we wanted to do. Now that we're in a situation with, we need to get housing, and we've been having that discussion, this poises us to be able to expand our housing capabilities. It's our capabilities that are really limited at this time. This infrastructure will enable that to happen.
That's all I have, if there's any questions.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. I think this is super helpful. We approved this at Plan Commission last Tuesday unanimously. I know Plan Commission was very supportive of it. I just had one question. Because the development on Lake Buttermore is already happening, confirmation that I just want to get and make sure that the citizens of Oshkosh have, the infrastructure that's being put in related to this TIF is not necessary for that project to move forward, is that right?
That is correct.
So they are completely unrelated?
Correct. We do have a sidewalk in front of that development because we did not require them to put in a sidewalk just because there's nothing to connect it to. So we did include that for the future. We put that in this TIF. But the developers of the Lake Buttermore development are funding all of that privately.
That's perfect. Thank you. And I guess my only other question there, as we think about the infrastructure, we're going to borrow for that, is that right? I think there was $9 million of cost. That's consistent with other infrastructure projects we've done in the past?
Yeah, we actually worked with Ellers. They're the ones that did that for us. And of course, our finance team works very closely with them when we're borrowing. So they had all of those, you know, latest and greatest numbers and percentage, our interest rates and everything that they used.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Flohm, followed by Deputy Mayor Beal.
Thank you. I'm actually quite excited about this. This is one of the few areas where we actually have the geographic capacity to expand. We talked about being landlocked, bumping up against our annexation agreements, so this is really the only way we have to go. So it's great to see. Single-family housing, just all types of housing in particular, is something I'm very interested in, as we've discussed. One of the questions that I may have is, in terms of after DOR approval, we go out to borrowing for this, when do you see this placed in the CIP for construction?
Really, we need to take a look to see when that increment is going to start to be generated so we have a funding mechanism to pay back our debt. So with the Lake Buttermore project starting this year, as of 1/1/25, they will have a little bit of increment that will be in the TID. And so we can start to, you know, maybe give it a year or two to grow, and then we can start to implement it. And of course, a big part of it, too, is that other development on the east side of I-41, 45 that I talked about, if they're ready to go, that might drive us to go even quicker. So it really depends on how fast some of the projects come up. And then once, maybe the other side is if we have enough increment that we feel we can start to borrow, and every year we'll have the increment-generated need to pay back the debt, we could start at that point, too.
One of the things that I think is important to point out, especially for people watching, the, you know, the tax base that grows is, starts with the current value. And by getting it done before the end of September, the base value rolls back to January 1, at which time the Buttermore development was non-existent from a tax standpoint. So we'll get a little bit of the first year, but it's like Kelly said.
A little bit.
Yeah, a little bit, but once we get it going, then all that will be part of the increment. And then depending on how quickly it builds out, then we can start timing our infrastructure improvements. So I don't see it happening in '25, short answer, but you know, when we're talking about CIPs this time next year, we'll have a better idea of where we're going to start programming those improvements.
Got it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Just a quick comment, and I'll make a quick, Diana, you know, I promised you. I absolutely love this. Thank you for your work on bringing this. We get accused a lot of times of being behind the eight ball or being reactionary, not forward-thinking enough. This really is the right way to go of thinking about what's going to need to be there so that we can get that there before we start putting shovels in the ground and then going, oh, wait, we need another, you know, sewer or whatever. So thank you for this work. I look forward to this coming back before us in a couple of weeks.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Nyfer. Look forward to seeing it next meeting as well?
Absolutely.
All right. Moving on to citizen statements to council, I have no one registered to speak under citizen statements. I do have several people registered to speak on other agenda items later on, and you'll be called when those things pop up. Next up, consent agenda. Take a motion and a second for consent.
So moved, second.
Just double checking, I have no one registered to speak under consent as well. Any discussion on consent agenda items? Seeing none, if you'll take the roll on consent.
Beal.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Pending ordinance, ordinance 24-464. So this is connected a bit with what would have been 24-.
469.
469. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Per the applicant, they've requested to lay over this 464 and 469 to the next meeting on 8/27. Is that still correct, Mr. Kepler?
Thank you.
So we're going to, can I get a motion and a second to lay over to 8/27?
So moved.
For 464?
Second.
Any discussion on laying over? Let's take the roll on 464, laying over to 8/27.
Beal.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Present.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flohm.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried six, one present.
Ordinance 24-465, approve request to attach to the city from Town of Nakaimai, Zellner, voluntary attachment, 3669 Oregon Street. I have no one registered to speak on this. Take a motion and a second.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? I see none. When ready, please take the roll.
Beal.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flohm.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Ordinance 24-466, amend section 13-7 of the City of Oshkosh municipal code pertaining to open outdoor fires, outdoor fireplaces, cooking fires, and barbecue grills, kettles, and outdoor hibachis to remove permitting requirements. So I have no one registered to speak on this. Take a motion and a second, please.
So moved, second.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
All right. I'm going to be a firm no on this. I appreciate the question coming before us. I remember when I was in college, I, the program that I took actually had several people taking courses on fire safety and management. I was not one of those. I don't hold that degree. I don't know that anybody else up here does. So when our chief of fire comes before us and their staff is recommending against this for the education and safety portion of it, it's something that I don't see the benefit in removing the permitting process to, against their advice. I also went online last night on my phone, popped in my information so that I could get a permit. It pulled up everything that I agree to with the standards of having the water there to put out the fire, all the different things. I think that piece is a positive as a communication device. I know that there are people out there that'll still have a fire without getting the permit, and that's obviously not recommended, but this also gives them that enforcement piece to go back and say, hey, make sure you get your permit, and that's going to teach you what not to do next time if it's, something gets discovered. So I'm going to be a firm no on this.
Any other questions? Or Councilmember Esslinger?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I brought this forward, so I'll just briefly talk about it. This isn't, again, we talked last time, this is more of a policy play here than the safety, education and safety. You don't need to charge someone $15 to educate them on what they should and shouldn't do. We have websites for that. And if you want to have a fire pit, whatever the case may be, it's incumbent upon you to be educated. And so charging $15 is not going to affect that in any way, shape, or form. I've never heard a resident of Oshkosh or anywhere for that matter say they don't get charged enough for taxes. We don't have enough fees. We don't have enough policies that we have to direct us what we want to do. It's always we have too much. And so I think in some cases, the taxes, it's like, what do taxes pay for anymore? I don't know. Those keep blowing up also. So I'm not arguing with the rules and regulations that go along with this. We clearly need those. Again, this is just whether we need to charge someone $15 to be educated, and the answer to that is no. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols.
I won't repeat what's been said already. I'll just mention, though, I know we've had a lot of discussion about a code audit, looking at our rules and regulations in the city, and I think that that will be a good output to determine whether or not this is something that's out of line with what other cities in Wisconsin are doing around us. So rather than reviewing each permit as a one-off, which certainly we can do, I would rather it come out of that process. And so I'll be a no here, too, but not necessarily because I like paying for a permit, mostly because I think that that's the right process. So thanks.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah, I have thoughts. So I guess similarly to Paul, I was interested in this one because I didn't like the cost behind it. I don't think a ton of people get it. I was hoping that maybe if it was cost neutral, more people would get that permit. In respect to Fire Chief Stanley, he did recommend to keep the permitting process, and I think to Carl's point, I don't have expertise in firefighting or anything of that nature. So I guess I would ask, does anybody have appetite to keep the permit in place but have it be $0? Would maybe have to make a motion, or can I chat about it?
I'm okay with that.
Is that part of the discussion? Councilmember Larson.
I was going to concur. I think that'd be, that's a fine solution. I'll repeat what I said last time. I have all the faith in Chief Stanley to keep us safe and provide the right information. My problem with this has always been that we had to pay for it, and I just don't think that, I feel like the fee is for the administration of the permit, and I'm not sure that's entirely fair. So I'd be entirely on board with that. And to DJ's point, that's been the ask for a few months here, is getting to the point of why we do things in general is important, and this is a good stepping off point for that. I would vote to not do this either way and do what you're suggesting, but yes, Joe, to your question.
Councilmember Flohm.
Thank you. For this, the education portion is more important for me than the fee. I would be fine with lowering it to zero and then having that available. To be honest with you, having a fee that doesn't justify the cost of administration is something that I'm not particularly interested in, so I'm more than happy to lower it to zero. I trust the expertise of our fire chief and his team, but at the same time, I think having residents pay for this is something that's a little bit unnecessary. So I'm good with lowering it to zero and having it there.
So I think everyone's looking over at me to figure out how to implement this. So what is before you right now? The text of the ordinance amendment was removing the ability of the, to get a permit at all. So what I'm hearing from everyone is you still want the permit, but you want to change the fee. The fee is on the schedule of fees, which is completely separate. So if you want a permit, it would be a no vote to what's before you today, and then it would be on staff to bring back an amendment to the fee schedule.
Correct.
Say that one more time.
So what?
The short part, not the.
If you want a permit but a lower fee.
A no fee.
Or a no, whatever fee, zero fee, it would be a no vote today because a no vote would keep the permit in place.
Got it.
And then we would need to bring back another item to amend the fee schedule down to zero.
Got it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
And I don't know if city manager roll off, if you know this off the top of your head, but what does that fee go to? Because that's $15.
That's general fund.
General fund, but like, does that just cover the cost of administering the fees?
That, the idea was just to recoup the cost of the service of going out there and explaining, doing the education part of it. So we'll eat that cost and, but that's what I heard some of the council members saying.
So then that cost needs to be borne out by the general fund then, so.
Correct.
My problem with that is, I'm not choosing to have a fire, but now my taxes are going towards somebody else who needs that education and that permit for their fire. And I mean, that's going to be the debate when we, if we come forward with another amendment to the fee schedule then, but, so I'll table it. Hold on.
Councilmember Larson.
Oh, never mind.
We'll take that one back.
I get what you're saying, yeah. Never mind.
Okay. Any other questions on 24-466 from council or comments? Okay, I see none, if you'll take the roll on 24-466.
Beal.
No.
Stevenson.
No.
Nichols.
No.
Larson.
No.
Esslinger.
No.
Flohm.
No.
Mugawar.
No.
Lost seven, or zero seven.
But I did hear loud and clear that the council would like us to come back with a resolution to lower the fee. Very clear direction. Thank you very much.
Next up, new ordinance. Ordinance 24-467, approve zone change from central mixed-use district to central mixed-use district with a planned development overlay. At 224 State Street, Plan Commission recommends approval. An applicant requests waiving the rules and adopting on the first reading. I don't have anyone registered to speak on this one, so if council's willing to entertain, take a motion.
May there be someone here this time?
Oh. No problem. If you would like to step up here and speak, and then if you can give us your name and address when you do so, so we can record that for the record. Welcome.
Evening, guys. Thanks for having me tonight. Jim Erdman, 2431 Hickory Lane, Oshkosh, president of Team SNW and owner of D&amp;J Construction. So I represent the project as the president of ownership, TJN Belita Rogers, and also I'm the project manager, general contractor on the project. So this particular project, the Oshkosh Northwestern Building, we've been at for a while. Kelly's certainly been helping us navigate our outside-the-box projects a lot in the city. So thank all of you for continuing to consider what we're trying to do. So this one is just a simple, it's parking lot. We're navigating between conforming to City of Oshkosh regulation and Wisconsin DNR regulation. We're an older used project. We're contaminated. We have environmental issues. So I'm stuck in the middle for about 14 months now between the city and Wisconsin DNR, trying to draw and submit a plan to all of you that you can come together on. So if we can get this one going with you guys, we'll take it back to DNR, let them take their kick in the can, and we'll keep it moving. In my world, I'm fighting winter. I'm trying to get that thing covered up before winter. Thanks for hearing me out.
Appreciate it. I'll take a motion and a second to put it on the floor.
So moved, second.
Discussion on 467? Councilmember Nichols.
I see that there's the request to waive the rules and adopt on the first reading. I was hoping somebody could speak to why that's the request here.
I think, Ms., I think Jim was trying to explain that because of the DNR rules, that's why they're doing it, but Kelly may have a longer answer because she's been chatting with.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we have. There is an email in your packet that they formally requested. A big thing is timing. There are a lot of requirements with the DNR since it is a cap site. And then, with the fall coming and everything, they want to make sure it's capped over the winter. So, they want to make sure that they have enough lead time to get a contractor in to do the work. And I'm not sure what the lead time is to obtain a contractor and get them under, you know, an agreement to come in. But that was the kind of the reasoning why we are very supportive of it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
So, just clarifying, even if we approve this before...after going to the DNR, they would come back with a GDP and an SIP?
That's actually later in the agenda here.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Any other questions or comments on waiving the rules? So, if you take the role on waiving the rules...
Do we have a motion to waive the rules?
Yep.
No. No, we didn't.
No, we took them. Right now, we're on the item.
Well, can't be on the item if we didn't waive the rules. We waived the rules first, and had a second. Did you catch that earlier or no?
I've got a first by Flohm and a second by Larson?
Waive the rules.
I believe so.
No, that was to move it forward. That was not to waive the rules.
That was my understanding. But either way...
Well, if you'd both like to rescind whatever you first and seconded, I'll redo it if you'd like.
I'll rescind it. Sure.
All right. So, I need a motion and second to waive the rules and adopt on first reading.
Move it.
Second.
Any further discussion on waiving the rules? If we take the role on waiving the rules.
Bilo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curried seven to waive the rules?
Back to the original ordinance, 24-467. I'll take a motion and a second.
So, moved? Second.
Any discussion on the item itself? I see none. If you'll take the role on ordinance 24-467.
Bilo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curried seven?
My apologies if I caused any confusion or put that out of order. Next up, new resolution, Resolution 24-468. This is to accept proposal for executive search services for city manager position, MGT Gov HR. I do have one person registered to speak, Mr. Tony Palmieri. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tony Palmieri, 212 West Parkway Avenue. I actually registered originally to speak for 37, which I will speak on that one also. But as the gentleman was speaking, I thought I wanted to say something about this. Just as another way of looking at this, I think it might be too early in this process to accept a search firm. I know that many of you or all of you have very different interests in what you would like to see in a city manager. Some of you place more interest on diversity of applicants. Some of you place more emphasis on economic development. Some of you place more emphasis on budget reform. I mean, any number of issues. And there are a number of executive search firms. And depending on what you're looking for, a different firm might be able to get you that. So, my suggestion would be to go with a kind of hybrid approach where we first in-house try to determine what we want. And then, at that point, find a search firm that can do that for you. The gentleman said that there's a point at which stakeholders are brought in. My view, for what it's worth, is that you should bring stakeholders in before you start the process. Find out what people want, and that will help you develop your administrator profile. And then, at that point, you find a firm that could do that. I also think, just as a general rule, I don't know if you're only looking at one firm. But I think you should look...at least look at at least two or three firms to see what different firms can give you. They're not all the same. And again, I think depending on what you say you want in your profile, I would say then find a firm that can do that for you. And I'm not saying the gentleman's firm can't do it. But I just think that it's way too early in the process to approve this firm or any firm before we have first had the community engagement. And I'll talk more later. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else registered to speak. I'll take a motion and second to put it on the floor.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Councilman Bressler?
Thank you, Mayor. I do agree with Professor Palmieri on most of his points there. When we were in our executive session and we did learn that Mr. Roloff was leaving and Mr. Fitzpatrick came in and we had a discussion finding a new firm, no, that's appropriate. I mean, it's a good thing to do. The more I thought about this is...and I'm going to ask the gentleman a little bit some more questions. But I did have some troubles with...and I'm the only one up here that went through this process last time. And I did have some issues with some of the process. But as Professor Palmieri points out, we don't really know what other firms can do for us. We don't know if they're more expensive, less expensive, the success rate they've had, and many other metrics that we could use. I don't know. Maybe the gentleman here and their firm is great, perfect. I don't know. That may be. But I like choices. And just having one firm, asking this one firm to help us, does not give us any choices. And so, and I could probably go on, but I don't want to bore anyone. I would be more comfortable with doing some type of request for proposals and getting firms to...and be specific. And again, I'm going to ask the gentleman some questions. But be specific on this process. What are you going to do? What do you want us to do? What are we allowed to do? How do the citizens get involved with this process? And many other things. So, that's my proposal is to...I don't say...I don't want to say not go with this firm. That's not appropriate. It's wrong. I'm just saying some type of request for proposals. And Mayor, I don't know if this is the time, but I do have a couple of questions for the gentleman. If I could, ask him now or...
Floor is yours. Yeah, we can invite Mr. Shaborsky back up. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I was the only one on the last...when we hired Mr. Roloff. I remember the last time when we got applicants, if I remember right, I don't think that the council was even allowed to see all of the applicants. They came in, and the firm went over those applicants and we got...and Professor Palmieri was involved in this process, too. I think we got, what, seven, nine that were recommended that we saw, and the rest, we didn't see. But I don't agree with that. As someone that represents the citizens and gets elected, I want to see everything that comes in. Might be boring, whatever, but I like to see everything. And then, I think the other thing that I really wasn't happy about is when we started talking to the applicants, I think we had five, seven people that we brought in that we could ask questions. First of all, we were told we could not call those individuals. I don't know if that's a law, if that's a rule, if that's policy, if that's what you should do, or I don't know. And then, when we had applicants, I believe we were only allowed to ask like three questions. Each council member could ask three questions. So, if you could just comment on those concerns or that process, is that the process now that you...your firm does? Yes or no? And maybe you can tell us a little bit more in particular, how you do that process? And then, where do the citizens come in? I know, again, last time, we had...when we had five or seven applicants, I think we had an open forum here with residents. They were allowed to come up and ask various questions also. So, I'm a little long-winded here. If you could answer that, please.
Sure. Keep me on track if I don't get to, you know, all of the issues that you raised. In general, we're very happy to tailor our process that's going to meet the needs of all of you as well as what you think would be most appropriate for the community. So, for example, say if you want stakeholder input on the front end of the process, there's a number of different ways we could do that. One example of that was a community in which, you know, we did focus groups with a number of different major stakeholders within the community. We've also done, say, a Survey Monkey, that you've identified a number of issues or attributes that you think will be important to get input on, and we could go out to the community and get input that way. So, there's a process we could build in on the front end in order to, you know, to gain that input and feedback. But there's also, say, we've done it on the component in which you're interviewing candidates and say you want to have a community forum to meet the candidates and learn more about them. We've hosted any number of those type of forums in which it has been an open house at City Hall. Come and meet the candidates. And the candidates, you know, may speak to a couple of issues that we give them the prompt ahead of time, but then also to talk about, you know, why they're interested in being Oshkosh's next city manager. Anyway, the point of all that is that we can tailor it however you like. We don't have a cookie cutter approach that is going to jam you into this square peg and said, this is the way you're going to do it. So, you're also hiring an executive search firm to discern candidates that will not only meet the minimum qualifications for what it is to be a city manager, but to also understand, you know, what are going to be the issues that will be important for all of you, but as well as what you as representing the community will be issues important to the community. And so, you know, it's with that, you know, I, you know, I believe, you know, we lend our expertise to...as to, you know, why we bring forward a certain number of candidates that, you know, we think would meet the top of the bill. But if all of you say to me, but Lee, yeah, we want to see that portfolio of eight to 12 candidates or so, but we also want to see who all applied for the job. You tell me. There's nothing secret, and we'd be happy to supply any part of that information, whether it's simply a list of all the applicants. Or if you want everybody's resume, we can do that, too. We don't get a lot of requests for that, but we have, and we've accommodated that. All right. What else?
Talking to individual...being able to call individuals and have a personal conversation with an applicant.
The...I've had council members do that on their own. I don't recommend it because not everybody may take that same opportunity with a candidate. And so, I think it puts the candidate in an awkward spot. They're certainly going to take your call. I don't recommend it. And I wouldn't necessarily know that you would do it. But I'm not going to body block you either if that's something you want to pursue. Again, I don't recommend it.
Okay. And then, the other one was, I think, when we had discussions with candidates, when they were brought in to City Hall in...I think we had executive sessions, obviously, when we were speaking to the candidates. We were allowed three questions. Each council member was allowed three questions. Is that the standard thing, or is that too much, too little? You know? So, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, typically, what we'll do, what I...you could expect from me is that I'll develop a set of suggested interview questions, something that would be circulated among all of you before you even meet the candidates. We'll then look to refine that based on, did I get all your interests captured within those questions? And if I didn't, you know, then we'll massage it before you even, you know, have candidates, you know, come in the room here. So, to your point, we'll provide a set of suggested questions. But again, you know, we'll tailor it as to make sure that we're hitting the points that you all want to explore with each of the candidates. In terms of, you know, how the process flows, you know, we always suggest a round robin, making sure that every council member engages with the candidate throughout the process here. So, depending on the amount of time you want to spend with each of the candidates, it would certainly be more than three per person.
Okay. That's all I have right now, Mayor, but I might have some questions or something later. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols, followed by Councilmember Flohm. If you don't mind, Mr. Fitzpatrick, you had pressed the button. Did you have something brief, or can we wait until after those two council members?
It's just something real brief, if you don't mind me...
Is that okay, Councilmember Nichols? The floor is yours.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think the questions that Councilmember Esslinger brought forward were good. And I think the answers that Mr. Zamborsky brought forward were good also. The only thing I would add is to the point of his recommendation not to have council members call candidates while the process is going forward. I think one of the reasons why I wouldn't recommend that, and I can't speak for Lee, is because it's...you want to have a standard amount of questions that everybody has an opportunity to answer. You don't want any allegations made by the candidates that they were asked something that was different, that they were disadvantaged, that they were asked an illegal question. And so, it's really not designed to constrain the council members. It's really designed to protect the process, to protect the council members, and to try to establish a framework whereby everybody has an equal chance to participate. So, I just wanted to add that extra information as to why we wouldn't recommend that from an HR perspective.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols, followed by Councilmember Flohm.
Thank you. And I agree that Councilmember Esslinger's questions were good ones. I just want to speak a little bit to process. So, on the...when I'm not sitting here, I'm on the senior leadership team for an organization that is several multiples the size of the budget of Oshkosh, 20 times the number of employees. We have had turnover at our CEO level, CFO level, other executives. And the process that I'm hearing we follow as a city, this is one of those rare instances where it matches the private side and the public side, where the HR team does actually support the process with suggesting a firm. They take their expertise. The firm has knowledge of the entity that they're searching for. It sounds like we have that here. When we've done those searches in the past, the Board of Directors, of course, hire those executive positions. And we sit as the Board of Directors for Oshkosh, if you're going to make that comparison. That board doesn't see all of the resumes for people that wouldn't have met the job. And that's by design because you do want to narrow the scope a little bit. They will interview them, which certainly will have the opportunity to do. So, I like that the process is consistent with what I've seen on the private side. By the way, one difference on the private side is we have to have several hundred million dollars of profit every year. And so, the fact that the process runs as well as it does, and we're matching it here, and our profit has to be zero in Oshkosh, which is a nice thing. I like that. I guess one question I do have, though, if you don't mind, is you're going to bring us a number of candidates, whether we see the rest of the resumes or not. Let's say you bring us five candidates, and we've talked to all of them, and we don't like any of them. What happens next?
After I get done weeping, then we stick with you until you have chosen a candidate and you're completely satisfied.
That's fantastic. I think that this process is being run the right way, and I'm absolutely supportive of moving forward with the search firm. Thanks.
Councilmember Flohm, followed by Councilmember Larson.
Thank you. One of the quick questions that I have is...one of the goals that I have for this search is to show that city government is listening to residents as much as possible. So, that includes engaging with stakeholders, neighborhood organizations. And so, that part is very, very important to me because one of my missions in this term is to restore trust in institutions and namely with city government. One of the things that I would like to see is an open forum, potentially around Robin, where members of the community get to meet these candidates. Is that something that you plan on doing? I know you touched on that. If, say, only three of the five are amenable, hypothetically speaking, to such a public forum, personally, I would like all five to be involved, if we had five. So, can you speak to how you would like to engage the public in this process and what you'd recommend to us in engaging the public? Because we would certainly have recommendations and guidelines that we'd like to see. But what would you typically suggest in this kind of situation?
Yeah, so as I mentioned earlier, we can do it on the front end, but also at the point in which you are interviewing candidates. So, if you tell me...and again, our process is very customizable. But if you tell me it's important, and all your colleagues are saying the same, that you want a community forum for folks to meet the city manager candidates, we will make that happen. We'll work with staff to assure that gets done, that word gets out of the community. And it's not an option for the candidates. So, if we've got five candidates, which are the folks that you're all going to interview or so, and I've never gotten resistance from candidates to participate in that type of thing. thing. They find it actually an opportunity to make the case for themselves. And then, within that process, you know, we'll look to develop a way in which the community will get their feedback to all of you to say, and again, they're gaining impressions of candidates, right? But those impressions will be important for you to keep in the back of your mind when it comes down to final selection. Does that answer your question?
It does, and I understand that this is more than KPIs. This is more than years of experience. It's about, you know, how people feel comfortable with somebody's leadership style. And so, that's important to me, and I appreciate your input. Thank you.
Councilmember Larson, and then I'll go after that.
Thanks. I just wanted to echo a little bit of what everybody said and talk a little bit about what Professor Paul Murray said, because that was my first question as well, was why can't we ask more firms? I've gone through, as Dejra mentioned, a different job than you, but I went through this process, a retired executive of another board I'm on, and it was exactly like this, which I'm appreciative of. It's fantastic, and it's great to hear Jacob mentioned the same things that my goals are for this as well. I have all the faith in the world that this group wants engagement, and that will be, you're hearing that already, right? Where you're not even hired yet, and you're hearing that from us, which is great. But this is an exciting time, and I think the more people we get excited about it, the better the end result will be, and that's great. And it's fantastic to hear that if we find nobody we like, then we'll just keep looking. So, you're hitting all the right notes for me, and that was all the same questions, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
I guess I'll go. Lots of good questions, comments so far. I appreciate all those. They're all good things to help form this process. I had a chance to participate in the search process for the last, for Mr., when Mr. Davis went through the superintendent's search for the Sasha Sherry School District. It was a similar process, and my part that I played in was part of the community engagement part of the process. I thought it was very well done. I thought lots of it hits very similar with some of the suggestions that you've put in your presentation. Councilmember Larson pointed out well, but you're hearing engagement from us. I think it's an understatement to say we want engagement. So, I'm excited to be a teaming with an organization that can help us through that process, do it professionally, respectfully, have a lot of integrity in the process, in terms of, from the front end to the back end of it, how we, how we get through this with, you know, hopefully, a very deep pool of candidates. But I would envision, just in terms of kind of piggybacking off of some of the things I've heard here, public meet and greet session, you know, whether it's here, whether it's somewhere else, those are fine details for later. Panel of community members being a part of this process, executive staff, director level here within City Hall being somehow a part of that process, too. But all these things, upon signing a contract, all these things will be things that we'll start working on with you in short order. You'll be reaching out, one-on-ones most likely, and then, I don't know if there'll be small or large group at some point, too, executive session. But to start framing those things, one process first, and then candidate profile after. Am I getting all that pretty correct so far?
Yes.
Okay. No, I think it's, I think, I appreciate Assistant City Manager and HR Director Fitzpatrick's recommendation on this firm. I think this will help lead us through a professional process, and hopefully, we get a fantastic pool of candidates, and we have tough choices come, hopefully, the early to mid part of November. Deputy Mayor.
Engagement. I just didn't want to be the only one who didn't say it. So, now you've heard it from.
Councilmember Stevenson.
I think I'm the only one who didn't say it, so now I have to talk. Yeah, no, I, I'm really excited about this process. I think we all, like we've said, we want engagement from the community. I think you guys are a stand-up firm, very reputable, and, you know, I think you're very reasonable, too. So, I'm glad, I'm glad we're getting this for the price we are. I'm a little bit familiar with headhunting organizations, if you will. Maybe that's not a term you guys like to use, but.
I'll own it.
Sure. Thank you again for submitting your application, and I look forward to working with you guys for the remainder of this.
Any other questions, Councilmember Esslinger?
Yeah, I guess maybe just a question. I think I know the answer, but, so there's no, the council does not want to afford any other firms to be able to have the privilege of coming up and telling us what they can do for us, and giving us a price, or that nobody wants to do that?
Deputy Mayor, Beal.
I don't want to speak on behalf of council, but it wasn't said, I almost said this before, but this is a firm that the city has a relationship with. Deputy, or Assistant City Manager, HR Director Fitzpatrick knows this firm well, works with this firm well. This is the firm, I understand, that helped us hire Mark, you know, moons ago, so I would not have any appetite to push this out to.
Not that many. I didn't say anything until that.
I just said moons. I didn't put a number on it. And then, I would not like to delay this process, to go through an RFP when we have a relationship built with an organization that has already proven to be effective.
And in terms of professional services agreements, this completely fits within existing city policies regarding kind of a sole source selection process, so.
All right, then, just so I'm clear, I'm sorry to hear that no one else has the opportunity to speak to us, just because we know one person, we're going to go with that person. I don't get that, but, so, I'm going to vote no here, and just to be clear, I'm not saying that this firm can't do this, and this gentleman, certainly, I think he can, because I'm not comfortable with just taking one firm and not listening, and not having any opportunities to speak to anyone else. So, I'm going to vote no on this. Thank you.
Is there any more questions or comments? If not, City Clerk, please take the roll on 24-468.
Beal.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
No.
Flohm.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Curried 6-1.
Next up, we have Resolution 24-469. This was also piggybacked with 464 that we laid over earlier. If I can get a motion, a second, to lay over at the request of the applicant to the August 27th meeting.
So moved.
Wait.
Second.
I'm sorry.
That's Flohm, Beal.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion to lay over? Take the roll on laying over.
Beal.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Present.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flohm.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Curried 6-1, present.
Resolution 24-470, approve general development plan and specific implementation plan for parking lot reconstruction at 224 State Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. I've got no one registered on this. If you'll take a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please take the roll on 24-470.
Beal.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flohm.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Curried 7.
Resolution 24-471, this was to approve the Amendment of Terms of Approval for American Rescue Plan Act funds to Operation Dream North, but at the applicant's request, they've withdrawn this. So, there'll be no action taken upon this this evening. They weren't able to give us that in time for this, tonight's meeting to update the That's the last of action items. Now, we'll be in the council discussion, direction to city manager, future agenda items. First thing up is discussion and direction fireworks, regulation, and enforcement. This was brought forward by Councilmember Larson. I do have a couple of members of the public who'd like to speak first. First one registered was Nancy Decker, if you wouldn't mind coming on up, and then followed by Carmen Scott, and then Mr. Tomi Palmieri is after that. Welcome.
Thank you. Never done this before. Nancy Decker, 2520 Witsel Avenue, apartment 205, Oshkosh, Wisconsin. I'm a retired teacher, current substitute, and an Ichi water director at the downtown YMCA, which is a combination of two to three martial arts done in the water. Thank you for, I'm going to read this, because I don't want to go astray, and I realize five minutes can just get away on someone. Thank you for responding to our concern. My disabled daughter and I have separately emailed all of you. I am here on her behalf. The use of illegal and unlicensed fireworks in her neighborhood has continued to escalate. She has worked with law enforcement for years using the non-emergency call-in line. I have gone in to speak with the officers. The Winnebago County Housing Authority has filed paperwork with the police on behalf of my daughter's complex. As we much appreciate their efforts, there is a growing year-round fireworks free-for-all in her neighborhood. This year, it was concentrated daily for six weeks, but literally goes on year-round as recently as August 11th. Her neighborhood has growing tensions between those neighbors negatively affected and those using the illegal fireworks. Bragging takes place on social media as to how amusing it is to hurt other people, as well as make fun of police response. Situations have included my daughter going out one night and pleading with the neighbor to please stop. The man pulled out a shotgun. Strangers pulling up in their vehicles, lighting off fireworks, and leaving. Fireworks blown off under sleeping children's windows. Neighbors shooting off illegal fireworks while a veteran yelled, "I got more sleep in Nam than in this neighborhood." Motorcyclists throwing cherry bombs. The license plate was turned over to the authorities. Neighbors being afraid to give police specific addresses for fear of retribution by other neighbors. A single mom needing to find alternate housing for days for her two autistic sons. A breeder of German shepherds now has her female dog shaking and crawling onto her lap. Adults in my daughter's complex were seen holding their ears and crying. Residents selling their house to move from the neighborhood. A service dog, my daughter's, basically being put out of service while on medications for anxiety and nausea from all the fireworks. People yelling obscenities and saying others are trying to spoil their fun. It is an understatement to say that her neighborhood has become volatile. I took a trip to our chain fireworks store to ask a few questions. Number one, where are people obtaining these illegal fireworks? Does he sell any? He said some are sold out of people's trunks, some homemade. His store sells no illegal ones, as identified by federal, state, and city laws. The second question, what is the meaning of the add-on license we are required to purchase at vendors? People think it allows the casual consumer to use any and all fireworks purchased anywhere, wherever, and whenever they wish. That is a wrong assumption. It is basically a license to transport, absolving the vendor and city from liability. The consumer is still responsible for their usage and awareness of the laws. I was informed at City Hall today that they do not give permits for illegal fireworks to be used for events such as weddings, celebrations of life, graduation, or the like. Besides better enforcement, here is one possible deterrent my daughter observed. A disturbance took place this summer some five blocks away. About six squad cars arrived with lights flashing. It could be seen from her neighborhood, and the information quickly spread on social media. It may have had nothing to do with the fireworks, but they stopped the entire night. It served as an acknowledgement and warning of police presence. People need to see that there is a response where concerns are reported. Why not put a similar scenario into practice? Send out even one squad car into neighborhoods with firework activity, lights flashing. Use our auxiliary police in marked squad cars to patrol certain neighborhoods. People would see their calls are responded to, and offenders would see the police presence. The noise levels created by illegal firecrackers, bottle rockets, cherry bombs, M80s, Roman candles, and half-sticks are absolutely unacceptable. I do have a couple videos on my cell phone that my daughter took in her neighborhood, but I realized I didn't have time to get those all hooked up. A community information campaign needs to be developed. That will clarify.
Ms. Decker. Ms. Decker. You're a little over the five minutes. Are you going to be able to wrap up very shortly?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. A community, I should talk faster. A community information campaign needs to be developed that will clarify the growing problem of what is legal and illegal, as well as restrictions on fireworks throughout the year. Hard copy news media, city websites, as well as other social media could get the word out. Please have this in place as soon as possible. In closing, it must be pointed out, apart from the city sanctioned fireworks displays, there are no grace days or special celebration times in Oshkosh for illegal fireworks, ever.
Thank you, Ms. Decker. Next up, Ms. Scott, Carmen Scott, and then followed by Tony Palmieri.
Welcome. I just got out of a hospital. It's difficult to talk. I've timed this under five, but I ask Grace if I cough, and I'm a little slower. My name is Carmen Scott, and I live at 521 Otter Avenue. Ironically, I'm a public speaker, and I've never been more terrified and horrified to have to give a talk. We moved from Hawaii in 2017 after an SUV slammed into our car at a stoplight. In a five-car pilot that left me with traumatic brain injury, intractable migraines, and PTSD. We relocated to be closer to my son and his family, who live here in Oshkosh. My migraines are noise-induced, so I live in the land of no. No church, no concerts, no farmer's markets, no large gatherings. These restrictions, along with medication, allow me to live a life of value. I have had a headache every minute of every day since 2015, but I work very hard to control those levels. This year was the worst fireworks I've ever experienced in Oshkosh. Between the M80-type bombs at 9:00 a.m. to loud aerials exploding at 2:00 a.m., it never ended. The police did respond, but the perpetrators would scour like cockroaches in light and not get caught. When the police left, they would start all over again. My dog was traumatized even with prescription drugs and CBD oil, because I could not leave my dog alone in this state. I was a hostage to EAA. Instead of taking day trips, going to movies, and enjoying summer away from the noise, I suffered considerably during that week. That is a jewel in Oshkosh's crown, and one that shines of light, of brightness in our community. This year, I could not get ahead of the pain, my PTSD and my panic attacks, and they threw me into a place I never want to go back to. On July 5th, the fireworks continued at an even greater crescendo. I suffer from visual hallucinations at night, so I take 10 milligrams of Ambien to sleep. The standard dosage is five. To be a senior on 10 is not heard of. Because of the six weeks of nightly fireworks, I'd be jolted awake after two or three hours and never again get settled. Sleep deprivation made everything worse. That night, I questioned if two pills would kill me. I decided it probably would be okay, despite it being such a large dose. And then I looked in the bottle, and I thought that if I took all of them, I would never have to listen to fireworks and suffer with pain and PTSD. As I started pouring the pills, another M80 exploded. My poor dog, the mud who saved my life when I rescued him, nestled into my body and shook as if it was an earthquake. I turned to look at him. I saw he was panting and drooling, and I looked in my dog's poor eyes, and I saw tears. I saw my, I am my dog's person. I knew without me, he would have no will to live, and so I did not take the pills. I did not die, and for the second time, my dog saved my life. On August 1st, my headaches were at a level 10, and I was worried that my blood pressure was so high it would have to stroke. I went to the ER, and they gave me a four-drug cocktail to help with the pain. While they did multiple tests and admitted me, I left after a day, but on August 8th, I went back to the hospital for another five days. The doctors are trying to pinpoint what happened. The doctors are trying to pinpoint what happened. It's likely it was an underlying medical condition I did not know that I had, but every doctor agrees that the excessive pain, the relentless PTSD, and the sleep deprivation threw my body into a trauma state and released a massive amount of inflammation which brought things to a head, leaving me with, among other serious injuries, a similar infection to pneumonia. Besides putting my life in jeopardy, the illegal fireworks cost me thousands of income because I could not market my books, and I canceled multiple book signings. I was forced to resign my position as an adjunct professor at Fox Valley Technical College, a position I loved and one that gave me purpose. Now I have tens of thousands of dollars of medical bills hanging over my head and being a senior on fixed income. This has devastated our family, and I am terrified of losing my home. My dog's job is not to save me. His my job is my friend, my confident, my exercise buddy and more. It is the city's job to save my life, and it is failing miserably when it comes to illegal fireworks. I stand before you, a broken woman. You all know me. Have you ever seen me? Have you know? I am trying to heal, to recapture my joy, to not regret the decision to move away from the life I loved. I know there are many wonderful things about Oshkosh, and I have worked hard as a volunteer and a cheerleader for all those good things. Thanks to this summer, I don't know that I can ever be me again, and that's the scariest thing of all. I lost the me I loved.
Tony Palmary, you're next up.
Mine is on the city manager topic. Is that okay?
That's coming up.
Oh. Do you want to discuss those first?
Um, yeah, if you could-
Yeah, mine is on 37C.
C, my bad. I'll call you back up in a few seconds if you don't mind. Sorry. Councilmember Larson, at your request, this was put on, I think, a little bit ago.
Yeah, I don't, specifically to me, I know we all got lots of emails. Carmen, I appreciate you very much. I know you and I talked a lot about this. I think this came up briefly at a previous meeting as well, and the hopes were that we would hear some kind of way forward or information from the police or something like that. I see Chief back there, so maybe that's a good, a good point to move on to next because I don't, I don't quite have the answers, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Well, good afternoon, or good evening. I first want to begin by saying I really appreciate the people that are, that have come forward and shared their experiences, and I know that they're very difficult. What I'm going to do right now is just kind of talk you through what happens with fireworks complaints, talk you through what we have going on within the city and the challenges that we have, because there are immense amount of challenges associated with this. So as we all know, the Fourth of July and other holidays such as New Year's are specific times in the year that persons wish to celebrate in various ways. One way that people celebrate is the use of fireworks. Although this might be enjoyable to some, as you've heard tonight, it is in fact a nuisance and very painful to others. The city of Oshkosh has a robust local ordinance that essentially prohibits any fireworks that shoot off into the air. We do allow the sale and use of novelty fireworks, or in other terms, sparklers, toy snakes, smoke bombs, fountains, cones, and spinners, items that do not fire into the air. Our problem here in the city related to fireworks really lies more with the state laws governing fireworks. State law prohibits the possession of fireworks that fire into the air unless one of the following exceptions apply: possession or use by a city, village, or town with proper notification to law enforcement; possession or use for certain industrial or educational purposes; possession or use as authorized by a federal license or permit; possession by a non-resident if the person does not use them here in Wisconsin; possession for the purposes of transportation to a location where use is authorized, provided the person does not remain in a city, village, or town where a fireworks permit is required for more than 72 hours; and finally, possession or use by a person who holds a valid fireworks user permit. So what is a user permit? A fireworks user permit may be issued by a city, village, or town, and may be authorized by the appropriate respective mayor, president, or chairperson. The permit can be issued to a public authority, a fair association, an amusement park, a park board, a civic organization, an agricultural producer for the protection of crops, or an individual or group of individuals, so essentially anybody. This is where our issue here in the city of Oshkosh begins. Less than 1,700 feet or 0.31 miles from the city, a person is allowed to purchase fireworks that are not allowed by our ordinance here in the city of Oshkosh. As was mentioned, and thank you for your information, we did similar to what you did, just to get a good take as to where, where our problems may lie. The person in fact sold a permit by the company selling the fireworks for $3 is a legal permit. This permit, I believe, can be confusing as the permit is issued by the town of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, state of Wisconsin. This can be misleading to persons as they could be led to believe that they are permitted in Oshkosh. In fact, I sent an officer into the business, and he was readily shown around, and the clerk explained the permitting process and advised that they could sell him at that moment a permit so that he could purchase their fireworks. My officer took several pictures while in the store, and here are a few of them for you to see. This is within the fireworks store, 1,700 feet from the city.
And for clarification, these would be ones that glow, grow up or blow up?
They grow up and blow up, yes, yes. Now, Officer Rennie? Here are two boxes of fireworks that, that he purchased legally once he was issued his These blow up and go up. To be clear, this business is in compliance with state law. This is an example of just one location here in the state that fireworks that are in violation of our local ordinance are legally being sold. And this is one business, but these businesses are throughout the whole state. The city of Oshkosh, 26 square miles, is just one piece of this problem, or one piece of the problem for our community. Talk a little bit about our calls for service. We take every call for service as it comes in, and it's prioritized based upon what else is occurring at that time. Some may believe that we handle calls on a first-in, first-out basis. This is not the case. Higher priority calls will always be handled first. Saying all that, our data shows that our calls for service for fireworks calls were actually down on the Fourth of July this year from previous years. In 2021, we had 62 calls for service for fireworks. In 2022, we had 50. In 2023, we had 38. And in 2024, we had 27 on the Fourth of July. That's a 56.45% reduction from 2021, 46% reduction from 2022, and nearly a 29% reduction from 2023. We also looked at our calls for service at a wider view by including days before and after the Fourth in our review. Reviewing an average of eight and a quarter days both before, including and after the Fourth of July, we experienced on average fewer calls for service in 2024 than we did in 2021 and 2022, and the average was the same from 2023 to 2024. And there are a lot of variables in this. It falls, is the Fourth of July on a Friday, is the Fourth of July on a Sunday, it all falls by the calendar. So that's why we wanted to create a wider window to see what is actually going on, to see if we captured data that would, that would somehow help us solve this issue or at least put a better eye on it. We also have additional calls that allow, that although do not start as firework calls, there are some reference to fireworks within the reports. An example, some of these calls would be disturbances, noise complaints, or suspicious, suspicious situations. So on the Fourth of July with our staffing, during the day on the Fourth of July, we had eight officers, community service officers and auxiliary, all working to handle traffic for the parade, as well as conducting safety checks on the route to keep the attendees safe. This is during the daytime. Parades are labor-intensive, and our staff does a great job ensuring that each parade goes well with no issues. This is in addition to the other 11 to 15 officers who are also working the street for a high total of 23 police officers working in the city during the day. As you're aware, the city sponsors fireworks for the community on the Fourth of July at Menominee Park. This is a large site that requires a large amount of personnel to manage the ingress, egress, and the safety of those who are in attendance. During the Fourth of July fireworks event, we had 10 police officers and supervisors working just that event by itself. This is the bare minimum we feel we needed to manage this event. We could have had more out there if we, if we thought we could get them. Oftentimes now I'm finding that I'm forcing police officers in because we just can't get them to sign up for the overtime. We also have community service officers working, along with our auxiliary, who come in to boost this, to boost our staffing. These officers and staff are assigned specifically to the event and respond to calls at the event and parking complaints when they arise around the park and in the neighborhoods. We also had 10 regular shift officers working to handle the other calls for service throughout the city. We had on average 20 total officers working between the fireworks at the park and the regular street patrol during the evening hours. That's 20% of my staff. This being a holiday, our officers are quite busy handling disturbances as folks were enjoying the holiday. As you also know, during the holiday, people also partake of beverages, and in that partaking of beverages, it brings on more disturbances, it brings on more calls for service. One disturbance call is going to take at least two police officers to respond to. It's not just one officer responding to those calls. In addition, we tragically had a suspicious death that occurred at the same time that took several officers away from our normal patrol functions for several hours. This puts pressure on the remaining officer staffing and their ability to respond to the remaining prioritized calls, including fireworks calls. In 2024, on the Fourth, where officer dispatch time and officer arrival time is documented, the average response time is six minutes and 30 seconds. This depends on several factors, but mainly due to other calls for service that are going on at the same time, and the number of officers available to take lower priority fireworks calls. Other calls like disturbances, welfare checks, accidents, fights, all those calls come into play. If it takes an officer several minutes to respond to the area of a fireworks call, a lot can change at that time. The fireworks may have already have been shot off, the people involved are no longer in the roadway, the officer is unable to locate the exact location due to the fireworks not actively going off, and this makes it difficult to establish probable cause to issue a citation. When officers do have contact with citizens who are suspected of using illegal fireworks, they also have to take into account whether or not they would have probable cause to write a specific person a citation. Probable cause certainly is defined as a belief that an offense was committed and that the accused has committed it. If the officer can't determine who specifically possessed or used illegal fireworks, then there'd be no probable cause to issue a citation. Many times when the officer arrives, the illegal fireworks have already gone off, and no one is actively possessing or using them, so the officer has not, has no enforcement action that he can take at that time. Many times, the person who calls into fireworks calls in anonymously and does not leave a name, so the officer does not have a witness to a violation that could testify to what he, what they observed. If the person does leave their name, the officer would also have to ensure that the citizen was able to positively identify who the person was who possessed or used illegal fireworks. Most of the time, the information is not available. We would also have to subpoena the call at a court who actually witnessed the violation. We found anecdotally that community members do not want to direct, directly confront their neighbors. I've heard that from many people along the way. I don't, I just want you to do something, which is problematic for us, because we, we have to have facts that we can prove in court. If we're able to successfully prosecute them, the fine currently assessed is $75, and the court cost is $232. So types of enforcement, officers handle each call for service based on its specific circumstances. Some of the reasonable options are typically education, verbal warning, and/or a citation. If an officer does make contact with a citizen who's cooperative and does acknowledge using illegal fireworks, the officer has discretion in how to handle the call. With a cooperative citizen, education of the law is many times the best option. As combining that with a verbal warning, most times causes the use of illegal fireworks to cease. Should the citizen be in possession of additional illegal fireworks, they could potentially be confiscated, but many times they're on private property, and the officer would not have the authority to enter the private property to confiscate them. If an officer does, does give a warning, they generally advise the citizen that should further violations occur, a citation would be issued. That tends to cause the use of illegal fireworks to stop. Now, to give you a snapshot of some of the calls that we did respond to, we had a disturbance with a juvenile. Three teenagers were throwing fireworks onto someone's porch and lit a flag on fire. Two teenagers were issued citations for illegal fireworks. Firecrackers were confiscated. We had two teenagers were lighting off fireworks on the balcony, and one got kicked inside an apartment, setting the fire alarm off. There was no damage. Warnings were issued, and parents were contacted, and we had a language barrier issue. The only language spoke in that apartment was Swahili, which created issues for our officers as well, and also have to have a clear understanding that they knew they were in violation. Call of fireworks being let off behind one of our local bars. When the officer arrived, he found two intoxicated females lighting off Roman candles that were leaving the ground and exploding in the air. When one of the females saw the officer pull in, she dropped the Roman candle to the ground, and the Roman candle shot off multiple projectiles that actually went under cars and exploded, to include the police car. She was issued a citation. Juveniles were on the roof of Merrill Elementary, and the caller said they may be lighting off fireworks. The juveniles were called down from the roof and were warned for trespassing. The juveniles indicated they were not using fireworks, and there was no evidence found that they were in possession of fireworks. On July 12th, we had an online report come into the shift commander's office that people had been shooting off fireworks on July 5th, and there was still garbage in the roadway. We sent out a community service officer to go clean up the garbage in the roadway. There was a report of juveniles either lighting off fireworks or trying to start a fire. Reporting party could just see smoke due to an obstructed view. Upon the officer's arrival, the juveniles ran. Officers noted a juvenile appeared to have lit something on fire. The fireworks portion, however, was unsubstantiated. A juvenile female was cited for various charges to include possession of a vape. It appears that there were no fireworks on this call. And of course, several calls were anonymous, and the officer checked the areas and could not find any evidence of fireworks usage or persons responsible. So what can we do? Many of you may not be aware of this, but Sir Robert Peel is considered the father of modern policing and established the London Metropolitan Police Department in 1829. He's well-known for establishing nine guiding principles of policing, and we learned this in Police 101. Nine guiding principles for law enforcement that still resonate today. To recognize always that to secure and maintain the respect and approval of the public means also securing of the willing cooperation of the public in the task of securing observance of laws. That's principle number three. We can only police but so much. There's only so many police officers. We need our community to police themselves as well. Some of that is through cooperation with law enforcement, some of that is through calling out your neighbors, some of that is just saying enough is enough. As I stated, law enforcement can't be everywhere. We need the community to help by observing the laws established by the community through their elected officials. So again, what can we do? Before upcoming holidays, the city can do additional community information through social media and news outlets that fireworks that shoot into the air are not permitted in the city of Oshkosh. The police department and fire department can and will do PSA messages on safety issues associated with fireworks. The police department will continue to enforce our local ordinance, and when appropriate, through citations when, when warranted, and we actually can prove the charge in court. I would also encourage each of you to share with your constituents that fireworks are illegal in the city of Oshkosh. You're the, you're the elected leaders of the city, and you need to be sharing with your constituents. Don't do it. Just don't do it. Council could in fact prohibit the sale of all fireworks to include novelty fireworks if you choose to do so, but this won't stop the sale from outside of the city. Council could also raise the fines for violating our fireworks ordinance, which could provide additional incentive to not use illegal fireworks. And finally, council could also work with our state representatives to tighten the laws around the state to prohibit more fireworks sales. Now with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Councilmember Stevenson had his button pressed a little bit ago.
Yeah, I guess you came up with a lot of the things I wanted to talk about, but I guess first and foremost, the price, the citation, $75 is pretty low. I mean, I think if we up that pretty substantially and try to, I don't want to say make examples of people, but make examples of people, we do some sort of, you suggested like public outreach, but when we update that fine, maybe we do some sort of public outreach that we're, hey, that fine's getting up, we're getting serious about these things. And you, you mentioned a little bit, so is the county would be the jurisdiction that governs outside the city essentially, the, the sale of- that governs out, outside the city essentially, the, the sale of fireworks that go boom?
Each, each town, municipality, each, each government entity. So the town of Oshkosh, the town of Nakayamai, each of these different towns or villages or cities, as well as the county, have the ability to issue permits.
Sure. I, I don't know how far it's going to get us, but we could always issue some statement asking municipalities to match our ordinance. We could put pressure on the county or the town that they, they need to, uh, for the betterment of the entire area, that they need to be doing this. I, uh, I don't know. I, I'll let other people talk too, but those are my initial thoughts.
Councilmember Larson, followed by Councilmember Flom.
Yeah, Chief, I just want to say thank you for the, the report. That was great. I know you and I talked about this a little bit in advance as well. I mean, and the numbers are fascinating, but as I explained to you, I can concur with everything Carmen said. We live in the same neighborhood. I mean, we're about two blocks apart. This is more than I've ever heard and I told you personally, I don't call you, I don't call non-emergency because I know I can't tell you where the fireworks came from. They're just loud. They're everywhere. So this report is going to be great and we can all point back to this when people ask us. We can say, watch the video and here's the explanation for what doesn't work because you did it very succinctly and I appreciate it. And I would absolutely have an appetite to raise the fine. I mean, I do think there needs to be something, there needs to be some recourse and I know it's impossible to, please, not impossible, but you explain how difficult it is and it's, it's hard to know where and why and how. So that seems to be about the only recourse we have.
Councilmember Flom, followed by Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you. Carmen, thank you for coming today and then sharing your story. I know that takes a lot of courage. And Carmen and I live actually rather close to each other as well and I can also concur that, you know, I, anecdotally speaking, they were a lot more numerous this year than they have been in years prior, even though the calls for service have declined. One of the things that I would like to see is compare our ordinance fine to other municipalities in the area. If we could do that and we can get kind of a view of what are the people around the area are doing in terms of their fines. I agree that they should probably be raised substantially. Uh, and then also ultimately this may need to be a state level fix, but we can do our part and work with our partner municipalities, the county as well, uh, and work on those PSAs and make examples of people. So it is frustrating that we can't do more, um, but I think we should at least start with raising that fine, um, pretty heavily.
Councilmember Nichols, followed by Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, I agree with everything that's been said. Amy, I don't know, sorry to, if, if you don't know, that's okay. Is there a limit to how much the fine can be for something like this?
There is under, uh, well, under state law, but it looks quite high. We would have significant room. Um, I think when we talk about raising fine, we have to keep in mind, I'll just comment that a lot of our fines are seventy-five dollars. So a vast, I won't say a vast majority without actually doing the math, um, but when I go to court, we're looking at between two hundred and thirty-two and two ninety-five generally. And again, most of them are two thirty-two. So when you're talking about raising the fine, just keep in mind that we have a lot of other ordinances, a lot of other violations, um, and how, how that, the interplay between everything.
Absolutely. That's super helpful. Um, and Chief, I know you mentioned that there is a, that we have a two-step process as we do with most things where we, we apply a warning and then we'll provide a citation. Would this deviate from every instance where we, instead of just providing, instead of providing a warning initially, we will just immediately provide a citation? Or do we do that today? Did I mishear you?
This is a difficult question because as, as indicated in the information I provided to you, we have two separate examples. You have a set of juveniles who got citations. You have a set of juveniles who didn't get citations because we would have difficulty and we're being, we're being mindful of the fact that they may not have known everything. They don't speak English. They're not from the United States. So if I were to tell my officers, you're going to write a ticket to everybody out there, it would take their discretion away from them. And so we have this, you know, simplest fact of, uh, we'll, we'll talk about a traffic citation. We don't write traffic tickets to everybody. Matter of fact, we have a standard. Out of all the traffic citations or all the traffic stops that we do, we look for the officers to write a citation for forty percent of those traffic stops. So literally sixty percent of the folks get a free pass within the community on traffic stops. If I took the discretion away from an officer, we would have unintended consequences that common sense, that sometimes has to come into play. Certainly we're going to, we're going to emphasize that it's going to be important and we're going to work hard, but again, we have, still have to prove every one of these citations.
Sure.
And to Amy's point, it can be difficult for her when she goes to court, whether or not we can prove these or not.
I appreciate that and I guess the next point I want to make, and we all know this, and this isn't just true for fireworks, uh, which is kind of a joke and you'll get it when I say it, but once it, once it's purchased, people are going to light it, I think, a lot of times. So it's preventing it on the front end and educating on the front end and telling people, here's your one thousand, five thousand, ten thousand dollar fine, whatever we decide that number is where it's allowed to be for, for shooting off fireworks. I appreciate your point too, Chief, that it's, it's incumbent on the seven of us, on staff, on others in the community to say, this isn't allowed in the city of Oshkosh. So I, I think certainly that's something we can coordinate, uh, going into 2025, which hopefully will be helpful. Last thing I'll mention, I know we've, we've mentioned working with neighboring towns and, and the county. I know there are services that we provide, uh, to the neighboring towns, to the county related to fire, actually. I'd be interested in discussing whether or not we've ever conditioned those services on restricting things like this. I know that we have a stick and a carrot approach a lot of times. I don't know if we've ever done that before, but that's something certainly we can help educate the neighboring community on, uh, what they need to be doing and, and we have a stick here. Um, and then the last thing I'll mention, um, we, with the new maps in Oshkosh, we are actually going to have two different assembly districts and two different senate districts, uh, which are four different representatives in Madison for the city of Oshkosh. It's likely that those, uh, are going to be from multiple parties. So this is a bipartisan issue as it affects the city of Oshkosh. I'd like to see us create a resolution for, uh, those members that represent us to say, this is something that we need the state law to change, um, just so that we can service our people better because we're, to your point, our hands are tied. So, thank you.
I appreciate you recognizing the fact that, that it's a large issue across the state and this, the city of Oshkosh isn't the only one that's combating this and this really truly is a state, a state problem. I can tell you from the city I came from nine years ago, the state I came from nine years ago, fireworks that went in the air, they were illegal. You can't just buy them.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, followed by Councilmember Ressler.
Thank you. Carmen, of course, thanks. I also want to say thanks to Nancy and, and everybody else who emailed us. Uh, we, I think you probably got so many emails from us, uh, between the, the entire month of July. Um, I'm going to echo a lot of what was said, but I'm going to try to do it quickly. I, I agree that this was probably the worst year that I've ever seen. We, I, I don't march in the, the holiday parade. I always tell Madams, like, I'm sorry, I gotta get my dog out of town, but we came back to town and it didn't even help because it was just, it was constant. Really like the idea of raising the fine. The, the number that I wrote down while you were talking was make it a thousand dollars. I don't know if that'd be enough, but hey, I, I think twice about doing something that was going to cost me a thousand dollars, but I know that means more people are going to contest it and that means more time that we're going to be spent in litigation. So I, I look to staff to give us a recommendation of what we can and can't do there. The twenty-seven calls for service this year that you mentioned, I honestly, I think a lot of that is people just gave up. Uh, I know that I chose not to call because I know that you can't find it all the time. I, I know that, I've heard that from other people. The only other idea that I would like is if we can, I, I saw you guys grabbing your pens when, uh, Councilman Nichols was talking about leaning on other communities that we, that we help service, is if we can get a sign up in one of those shops in, in their store window that says, many of these things are illegal in the city of Oshkosh. Check your local ordinances or call your local city council members or whatever it needs to say. I don't know how we can make a private business do that, but if we can somehow condition that on their permit, uh, working with the neighboring community, but that'd be something I'd be very interested in. And to touch on what, uh, Councilman Nichols said, um, I know at least one of our elected representatives is watching us right now because I'm guessing a lot of us got a communication from her that, uh, she'd be happy to work with us on, on some sort of a statewide resolution or what we can do.
Councilmember Ressler.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I was listening to your, um, analysis here and I could, I could hear the frustration in your voice and, and, you know, what you're going through, the officers and, and everything that goes. And as an elected official, I, I share your frustration with this. Um, and I, I think you would agree that punishment has to fit the crime. And, uh, like my counterparts here, I, I have no problem raising, uh, the, the fines for these, but I say that with caution and I want your opinion on this. If, like the lady here, you know, clearly goes through pain with this and I believe there are many more people that, that have that. So if, if you get a call or your, your officers get a call, uh, and they're going back to areas of the city where this is a problem, uh, there are many calls and they're inflicting this pain. I mean, those individuals, I, a thousand dollars, two, whatever we can do and if we can raise that with the state, I'm all for that. Where I'm a little more cautious than I want to be in the real world and I'm not condoning using illegal fireworks, you know, that where there could be some block parties and where everyone wants this. I mean, they, they have a block party and they want to do the fireworks and nobody calls in, but a, an officer just happens to drive by and sees them shooting off fireworks and they have the ability to levy a fine of a couple thousand dollars. How, I mean, would you direct your officers and not to do that, to do one, but not the other? Well, you're talking about an officer discretion. So in those two instances, um, if we can give you the leverage of, of increasing those fines for those individuals who are clearly a nuisance and, and are causing pain, um, you, you got to vote here. But I would hope that those, that officers would not do that where there, there are no problems or there's no calls or, I don't want to say there's no problems, but you, I think you understand what I'm saying.
So there's, there's two, there's two responses to you. First of all, raising the fines, I think, I believe will be helpful in a deterrent.
Yeah.
Because, uh, you know, am I going to write a check for two hundred and thirty-seven dollars or am I going to write a check for twelve hundred dollars? That's going to deter me from doing something in a bad way. If an officer drives through a neighborhood and there's a block party and they're firing off fireworks, those fireworks, the effect of those fireworks is, goes more than just that block party. They go to the neighborhood next door or the neighborhood next door. I received a video of fireworks going off there. We're clearly farther away from somebody, but they were still impacting that person. So, and what we do when it comes to discretion really is on the, on the officers to discern as best as they can the right course of action. A, a block party in my mind wouldn't be a reason to say, well, this ordinance doesn't apply to you, but it applies to everybody else. In the, in the case of the language barrier that I highlighted, that's a, that's a discretionary item right there and we solve the problem. The kids quit firing off fireworks. But we can't just discern from one block party that likes them to another block party that doesn't like them and treat one differently than the other. We, we certainly have to be in the middle and use our best judgment in what we do on enforcement side. So to your point, I can't see telling an officer that, that, um, don't write a ticket to this block party, but do write a ticket to this other person over here because it's still illegal. No matter which way you slice it, it's illegal unless there's a permit that's issued. And I don't believe anybody in this city will issue a permit for fireworks that go boom in the air.
Yeah, and, and I understand that. I appreciate that. But again, I, the other factor though is what is the, what is the byproduct of the action that the person is taking? If the lady here, I mean, that's outrageous. And so again, the punishment I think has to fit the crime. Can there be other issues with a block party and causing? Yeah, there could be, but I mean, if there, if it, if that rises to that level, I would hope that a resident would call and say, look, I'm having a huge problem here and, and it's the Fourth of July. I mean, you can't get rid of this as much as I would love to get rid of it. I'm just, I'm, again, I'm trying to be realistic where I don't want to give someone the ability to give a two thousand dollar fine to a mom and dad with their kid and they're, you know, lighting a couple of bottle rockets. That just doesn't make any sense to me. And, and I understand it's, it's against the law, but again, with a discretion, I just, I don't, I hope you understand what I'm saying.
I do understand what you're saying and that's where it comes into play, education and just the, maybe we don't light off bottle rockets because we make it a fine of whatever the dollar amount is that, that each of you establish. But education is going to be a big piece of this. Hey, in the city of Oshkosh, if you light off fireworks, you get a five hundred dollar fine. I don't want to pay that. People work too hard for their money. They don't want to pay that fine. So the deterrent piece simply would be if you do it, this is what the consequences are for doing it. I mean, people make decisions, people make decisions all day long. They make good ones and they make bad ones. Somebody chooses to drive down the road and they're, they're OWI, that's a bad decision. They also know there's consequences associated with it, but they made that choice. We have to take each situation as it presents itself and once it presents itself, look at the facts associated with it. And there may be times that, that the warning will come into play. That's an officer's choice in his discretion piece to give that person a warning if they believe that they're going to follow that. It may be that we gave a warning and we have to come back and then they're going to get a ticket. So each one of these instances that occur can have a different consequence based upon the circumstances of that given moment. That's why discretion for the officer is so important because if we do a blanket across the board, we're going to have unintended consequences, uh, in this particular issue.
Assistant City Attorney.
I was just going to jump in. I, while everyone was talking, I did look up the cap, um, just because I wasn't expecting everyone to jump so high so quickly. Um, the cap is a thousand. So, uh, that, that would be as high as we could go.
I will say if you did a heavier fine, that does make a statement to our community.
Councilmember Stevenson, followed by Councilmember Beal.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's the bigger point. Uh, I, I don't, I don't want the first time a person hears about this fine to be when you guys are there. Uh, I, I think the, with your suggestion, ma'am, I, I think having that, uh, that wider social media or public input, making sure everybody knows that this thing, something we're getting hard on, uh, something that we're going to move forward with. And I, I think that's the bigger one. That, that's making sure people know that this is going to happen, that it's out there. Uh, I, I'm not thinking that a thousand dollars, somebody getting a fine is going to stop them from, everybody from doing this, but I think if the public knows, uh, that we're getting a little bit more serious, I think that's the bigger point.
Deputy Mayor.
I would like to, uh, see a, a resolution to increase to a thousand dollars and if we get enough nodding yeses, maybe we can work on that. Cause it sounds like everybody's in agreement on that. Do you want a motion?
No, but, though, we were only saying it's an ordinance, but we.
Yeah.
You want a thousand dollar fine.
I do.
That's, that's what.
I want a thousand dollar fine with a lot of communication ahead of time saying, if you light off illegal fireworks, you can have all the fountains and sparklers. I want people to enjoy it. If you want to go see fireworks, go to the, the Menominee Park. It's an amazing show. It's free and you have amazing police force there that's going to keep you safe. But you don't, you live in a community and don't again, your actions affect other people. You don't get to make that choice even, you know, because you like them. You live in a society. So enjoy your sparklers, but anything else, I, I want it to be pretty well communicated that we're going to be as aggressive as possible as staff power allows to, to enforce that.
You have my commitment that no matter where you go with this, we're going to push hard on the, on the PSA side to, to talk about this. I've already been speaking with the fire department and we can partner up together and, and do some strong social media work and certainly the city's, the city's media department, they'll be more than happy to provide videos for us so we can push out there. And certainly this is something, if you do a fine, you're going to, you're going to create public buzz, good or bad, you're going to create public buzz that is, is going to draw media attention as well.
Before Councilmember Nichols goes, just a brief, um, to that point on the communication side, the city's blanketed with about half of the city, maybe just under a third or just over a third is covered with neighborhood associations. It should be nice. It's an avenue of, of outreach that we can use. Not that I'm trying to tell you what to do, but.
We're already thinking the same thing.
Sounds good to me.
I just, you give me the tools to work with and I can certainly work with them.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Nichols, followed by Councilmember Flom.
Yeah, I would, I would just like to add, it, to the extent that there are other mechanisms or other ordinances that we can redefine the, the fine for, uh, related to fireworks, maybe it's not just shooting them off. I don't know if there are other, is possession.
Possession is illegal.
Possession is, so if there are two ways that we're issuing $1,000 fines and then that's a $2,000 fine, I guess I would just want to understand what the menu of changes would be so that we can talk about it.
Understood. Understood. And in that case, so the cap is 1,000, so it would need to be to, the officer would need to establish probable cause for the two different violations. You can't just pile everything on, but if there is, you know, if there were grounds for the two, you can certainly write multiple citations.
So if I shot off a loud and proud, but I still had a pigskin that we see over there, that would be possession of one and use of another?
And again, that would be subject to the officer, but yes, that could theoretically be two violations.
And I think you also need to consider what the judicial side would do as well. Many times, if you have a, and I'm going to speak kind of for Amy, but if you have a very similar, you might get one, but you won't get the other on a conviction.
Sure. And I guess maybe my point is that our PSA would be it's a $2,000 fine. And now what happens in a courtroom, we don't know. But I think we can say it's up to $1,000 for possession, $1,000 for using it, whatever the language might need to be. But I think giving us the ability to communicate to the community that this is, it's very expensive, very fast, so don't even buy the thing. It's kind of my goal.
The mothers against drunk drivers, they do a really good job of talking about how your insurance goes up, how you can lose your job, how you can lose your car. Certainly that's not going to happen here, but when you talk about consequences, it gets people's attention.
Sure.
And you know, sorry, he gave me, you know, as soon as the person gets that ticket, it's going to be on, you know, you're from Oshkosh, when? On Facebook, which is going to be another advertisement for us. I don't know what you're talking about.
You're very nice when you post on there though.
She's always nice.
Yeah.
Just a quick question, Chief, to follow up on some of the other inputs and comments. Do you host sort of an annual information session around the Fourth of July with community associations, neighborhood associations?
We actually do an annual neighborhood association meeting, not just surrounding fireworks, but we have input sessions from neighborhood associations. And then we certainly just got done with National Night Out where we go to every neighborhood association. Twenty, we had 22 events in one day that we had officers go to. Generally, in the case of this, we would certainly want to engage them to let them know this is what we're doing. Might even invite one or two of you to come along with me so you can share your opinions as well. But to the magnitude of what you're discussing, I think it would be prudent for us to do a meeting specifically on this. And whoever wants to come, they can come. It's a real simple equation. If you have fireworks that go boom, go up in the air, you can get, whatever the dollar is, you can get double that. If you end up with two tickets for $1,000 or whatever the number ends up being. And then just let them give us their feedback back. I think it's pretty clear that, it's pretty clear that shooting fireworks off on a non-sanctioned event has all kinds of consequences, not just dollars. But I share with you, we have kids shooting off fireworks that go boom. I have friends that, when they were younger, they went boom and they hurt themselves. Just, you can hurt yourself. And that's where our fire department would be helpful in the consequences of not just the fines that we do, but you may harm yourself. You could lose a finger or two. You could lose worse than that. You could harm somebody. Or in the case of what we heard tonight, you can tragically harm somebody with unintended consequences because of other issues that they've experienced in their life that create even more catastrophic consequences for them that may be unseen by others.
And just to follow up more for the people at home, the city does have a team policing tool on its website where you can contact a shift lead in each district of the city. The city is split up into districts by the Oshkosh Police Department. I know Chief Smith, when we met recently, you highlighted that tool, so I think it's a very good resource for people to use, especially around this time of year.
I appreciate you studying.
Council, any more discussion or comments on this topic? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, discussion of streetlight, lighting policy. Also, Councilmember Larson.
That's me also. And Mark, I'll need a little bit of your help here to start this off. I received, there's Jim right there, even better. I received some correspondence from people in Millers Bay neighborhood. There are lamp posts being replaced because WPS deems the old concrete ones to be not good anymore. I know there was a discussion at council January of 2023. I did finally go back and look through it as a starting point. But the questions are coming from people who are having their lamp posts replaced in their front yard and they don't know why. So that's why we're here.
Yeah, I could just give you a brief summary. So we presented this topic to council in January of 2023. And basically, what was presented at that time is WPS had informed us that the, some of the concrete streetlight poles in the city, specifically the ones that are on the, some neighborhoods in the northeast side, are deemed structurally deficient and based on their standards need to be replaced. So WPS in recent years was acquired by WE Energies, so some of their policies have changed. In the past, what they would do is if they had a, they consider a concrete streetlight pole to be decorative. So in the past, if that was installed when the development took place, WPS would replace it with what they would, fiberglass pole, which they'd also consider to be decorative. However, a policy has changed since their acquisition by WE Energies. Their standard is now a wood pole. So if any pole that WPS owns is deemed structurally deficient or whatever other reason they have for replacing that pole, their standard is a wood pole and that is no cost to the city. They have changed now where in the past, like I said, they would replace the, they don't have concrete poles anymore. They don't install them. But they will install fiberglass, however, that is a cost to the city to do that. So the options were either you can, no cost to the city, they'll install the wood pole, or you can get an upgrade at a cost. It's went up over the years. The last I checked in, in October 2023, it was about $3,300 per pole to get the upgrade. That's the one-time upfront charge and then it's about additional $8 per month. So they, they have a pretty heavy tariff and it's not the easiest to understand, but that's the gist of it. It's upfront cost per pole and then in perpetuity until that pole is, again, deemed in need of replacement, there's an extra monthly fee of about, it comes to about $8 a month in the monthly fee per pole in addition to the, it was 3,300, it's probably a little bit more than that because I know they've just filed for another rate increase. So anyway, that is the policy change. There, at the time, there were 10 concrete poles identified in that area that needed to be replaced. I believe there's, there's about 450 of those WPS fiberglass poles out there, which at some point they're going to want to replace those as well, which now will be replaced with a wood pole unless the city agrees that they want to pay the extra charge per pole. So there's a little over 500 poles that in the city that are either concrete or fiberglass are going to be after replaced at some point in time. And they will be replaced with wood unless the city would like to pay for the upgrades. So that's kind of the gist of the issue. And now, they said they were going to do this work in 2023. For whatever reason, they're just getting to it now. So that's why now some of the citizens are noticing that their poles have been replaced. And there is, you know, I've done some observation in that neighborhood. There is, it's, there's, you can go down Menominee Drive, Hazel Street, there are a lot of wood poles. I think Menominee Drive is all wood poles. But then you get into those neighborhoods where they've had different iterations. So that's why there are some concrete, some of those concrete were updated at one point with WPS fiberglass poles. So that leads us to where we are today. Those are, at the time, I had given that presentation, that was the options. You could either, no cost for a wood pole. They had two different types of upgrades available. One was a black fiberglass with a cobra head, they call it. And then one was with a lamppost style, and those will both be extra cost. And at the time, basically, since the city didn't really change any policy, WPS did, that was kind of the direction at that time was to continue with the policy as we were.
Councilmember Nichols filed by Councilmember Larson.
Thank you. I guess I just have a question. My understanding, and so I might have this wrong, but my understanding is that there are some lighting that is owned and administered by WPS and there's some lighting that's owned and administered by the city. Really, we're just talking about the WPS poles. The city, and that might be where some of the discrepancies are, is the city is investing differently in our owned lighting than WPS. So I have that right so far?
Yeah, so basically, yes. So there are both WPS poles and city-owned poles. So how that works is if we're doing a road reconstruction project and we can put our own infrastructure in, CP Avenue is a good example. We try to do that because it is more cost-effective for us in the long run. Like I mentioned, for a wood pole, for example, WPS charges us about $20 a month. If we put our own infrastructure and lights in, it's about $4 a month. So we get the benefit over the long term. However, initially, there's a huge capital expense that goes into that. I know we had a discussion with council, I believe it was last year, about that. And that's, that is the difference. So we have control, obviously, of the city-owned lighting, but we don't have control over what WPS does. The majority of the light poles, I think it's probably 80%, are still owned by WPS.
And I think when you and I talked last week, it's not only just a difference in the cost of the physical infrastructure, but the fee associated with electricity is actually significantly higher by WPS than when it's administered by us. Is that right?
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
So is it a reasonable, and I don't know, so this might just be a flat no. Is it reasonable or practical for, as the WPS poles need to be replaced, we actually invest in the infrastructure to bring those on to the city side and we'll see a return hopefully after X number of years?
That would be very difficult because of the infrastructure. So that's like I said, I mean, if you're doing a road reconstruction project, you got to think we got to bury conduit and basically get the whole underground system in place. So that would probably be impractical for like, if we're just replacing one streetlight. That, where we get the benefit is where we can do, you know, five in a row. Then it makes sense for us to get the infrastructure and especially, what we try to do is piggyback on the road construction project. So if there's a contractor that's reconstructing the road and they're already digging everything up and while they're burying other utilities, we can say, hey, can we put, you know, we'd like to put some conduit in there for our streetlight and we can do that as part of the project, obviously at a lot less cost than say if we had to have to either hire a contractor, probably hire a contractor because we don't really have enough resource, otherwise, you know, get a whole crew out there to basically bury infrastructure system for what could potentially be a light or two.
And so do we have a policy that when we do this work, when we do infrastructure under the road or we do a road reconstruction, we always put in our own lighting infrastructure?
I wouldn't say always. I would say it's based where it's feasible. So like I said, if there is a, like, for instance, like CP and Algoma, where we're doing a long stretch where we can get a bunch of lights in and it makes sense for us to do that, we would. If it's like a short block where there's only a light or two, we probably wouldn't because it's just because of economies of scale, aren't there?
I'm going to take it from the presentation and Chris, you said you already read it, but switch to city-owned streetlight and install aluminum or steel poles if the following criteria is met. New road construction, minimum five streetlights. Our plan for the area makes aesthetic sense with neighboring streets and funding is available in the budget. We've been trying to add them to our street projects if we can get them in the budget. Get them in the, get those other criteria met. So that's what we're trying to do. And I think we're, I think we're down to 74%. I thought you sent me something just the other day.
That's probably right.
So we've gone, I mean, for a few years, we've gone from 80 to 74. But doing it immediately and doing these single ones, that's the problem. And I understand the people's frustration, especially when it's mixed up. You know, personally, I have a wood pole on my street. I'm okay with that. But it's consistent. I think the consistency is probably the other thing that's kind of annoying people.
Well, and the reason I ask is not, I agree with you and I would be frustrated, no question, as well. I guess where I'm going with this is if our policy is that as we redo roads, we're going to add our own infrastructure, we could be, if we replace these poles today with the nicer poles, I just did quick math, 3,300 times 500 is 1.6 million dollars. To eventually rip them out ourselves, replace with our own infrastructure, seems like we're going to be double dipping and double paying for some of these projects, if that makes sense. That's why I'm hesitant there. I'd like to see us switch from WPS. I think that's the plan though, and that's kind of what we're doing. So it seems like there's some growing pains and delays there, but I understand the frustration.
Yeah, the amount of time it takes to get us from 74% down to zero, it's going to be a while.
Councilmember Larson filed by Councilmember Flum.
I get all that. And again, in talking to people who live there, I think they understand that as well. We're hitting on some of the frustrations though. I mean, the, I know it doesn't apply exactly the same way, but if this were a reconstruction, this neighborhood would dictate that we put in decorative poles because we do that in the places where they match. So I would be frustrated if I lived there looking at, I went back and watched the meeting, like I said. Councilwoman Hanson pointed out that CP at the time had just been redone, looked beautiful and they had new lamp posts, right? These folks are in the same position except they're getting the ones that were paid for ages ago removed and they're getting less good ones now. So I can understand where that frustration comes in. The switching to the city-owned ones, this meets most of those criteria, which is also fascinating. I know this is all or nothing, but it does, there are more than five in this area. It makes aesthetic sense because we already have them. There's definitely not funding, but it's not a new road. So it meets 50% of the criteria we say we want to meet anyway. It's just, I don't know where we go with this. I understand all the expenses. It makes perfect sense. I think the biggest complaint that I'm hearing from the people who live there is that they didn't have any say in this. And I understand that somehow, sometimes how these things work. When I look back and Jim, I read, the proposal's great. I understand it. I read it and then I went back and watched it. There was never a vote on this. There was never necessarily consensus on this. You made a presentation and then the meeting moved on. So the people who live there who are having their decorative street posts removed and less decorative ones put in had no notice and they showed up one day and there was a truck there taking their lamppost away. That's pretty frustrating and I would presume something we'd like to avoid in general. I know we can fix it. I don't want to just be the squeaky wheel with no solutions, but I don't know what that is. And I can tell you to a number, the people who are having that happen to them would feel a lot better about it if somebody had asked or given them the option to say, sure, we'll pay for that. And that was one of the options presented to council at the time, but it never went any further than that. It just stopped. I know that doesn't help for now, but if there's a way to make that an option, because they've replaced, what, three out of the 10 for now? But there's 10 more coming immediately that you don't know about because they don't have a say, right?
Right. There are more coming and I think they are going to be doing it relatively soon.
Right. It's the entirety of White Swan is concrete posts all the way around the water essentially. I drove it today.
One of the options that Jim pointed out in his presentation, there's a provision to get, create a neighborhood, basically a lighting district where you say this area. And if those folks want to agree, that's not as easy as it sounds because you, getting agreement amongst neighbors, you get lots of different opinions. We could look at pursuing that and we didn't do that as a follow-up specifically. But if the council wanted us to do that, we could, you know, reach out or at least make people aware, here's a process. But then it's, you know, we could contract with WPS or WE Energies to do those types of things. And that was, that was one of the ones you used San Diego, California as an example. And I had some experience with lighting districts in California, so I'm familiar with that, how that works.
I mean, to me, that's sensible and I know that that would make these people who live there feel a lot better about it. There already is a Millers Bay Neighborhood Association aesthetic plan that was drafted in like 1995 or something like that. I went through and read it. But there, some of these things are in it already. So they've done some of that groundwork maybe. But I don't, I mean, how can we help you pursue that for the folks who this affects? I know this isn't like big scope city stuff. It's only a handful of people, but how can we help you do that?
I think with some direction from council that that's something you'd like us to pursue, the districts. I mean, certainly because of the delay with WPS that kind of took the whole public information. We were, we did it in January because we expected them to start in March of '23.
I remember there being a sense of urgency.
Yeah, WPS was like, we need to know now. And it's like, okay, we'll give you an answer and we give an answer and then it's hurry up and wait for 18 months.
Well, I don't know that we ever gave them an answer either and that was part of the problem. It was discussed and then there was no resolution to it and then they just started taking the poles away. So I think it would probably do a lot for this if you could at least provide some resource for the people who live there to have another option.
And just for FYI, that is not the only area that has concrete poles. That's where the majority of them are. I do believe there are some on the west side of the city. There might be, I think Scooter told me there's some in the West Haven area. And then, and there were also, we didn't necessarily hear about it, but there were some concrete poles, I believe, near the, kind of behind Fleet Farm, the Walmart area that were replaced with wood poles in the last, probably maybe two, three years ago. So there's a couple other areas, so it's not just specific. So that's where, you know, I just, that's the difficult part for Scooter and I, being my electric manager, Scooter. We're the ones that get the calls and we're trying to answer these questions and we're explaining to them, this is a WPS policy that, you know, we can kind of give them some direction, but ultimately it's, you know, it's their infrastructure. So they, if council, you know, would like to pay for it, we can, but as staff, we can't say, oh yeah, we'd like to pay more for, you know, a million dollars or whatever it is. That's just not, that's not our discretion. However, the only caution is that whatever we or you decide to do, be aware that it's, it affects a lot of people. It's not just going to affect these 10 potential light pole areas.
Councilmember Flum.
So I heard from a number of residents this week, particularly on, kind of near White Swan, Graver. And the reason why I kind of want to jump on this is because I can understand. understand people's frustration where they see, you know, they had a nice decorative lamppost and they get this tar-filled wooden pole in their front yard and they're like, I didn't vote for this. And so I understand when you're working with a utility company, we don't necessarily have that democratized say in that. So I understand that some neighborhoods are gonna want something different than other neighborhoods. One neighborhood may really want to have decorative light posts. Other ones may be just fine with wooden posts. So I'm a fan of the street lighting districts. I know this was something that was gone over in 2023, but if city staff could potentially look at that and see if there's any sort of way we could offer that to neighborhood associations, especially if they draft up an aesthetic plan or if they don't and they want to change something. I think the biggest thing for me is uniformity because as a resident, that's something that I like to see and I'm sure other people like to see that as well. I know not everybody cares about that, but for the people who have reached out, I would like to at least give them the option to have and pursue that ability as a neighborhood if they want to go with a more uniform state.
Well, not to be too smart, but they're gonna be uniform when we change them all out. It's gonna take a little time. I'm getting, it's a little late, so I'm gonna get a little smart here. This is a first world problem, folks. When you're talking about the light pole outside, I've lived in neighborhoods that had buried power lines. I live in one now, my last one over in Greysland area, I think you were referring to it. I'm familiar. I know the city manager, not to throw him into this, but he lived in a neighborhood that also had some. And as he kind of pointed out in a previous conversation, didn't really look at the pole until somebody hit it, busted it, WPS came and replaced it. And now he realizes that he's got a different looking one, you know, in the neighborhood. It does matter to some folks. Doesn't matter to me at all. What matters to me is the finances of the potential impact of one and a half, $2 million for more or different, excuse me, different poles. It's not adding more lighting in neighborhoods that we should be adding more lighting. We've got neighborhoods that have crime issues that should be well lit and should be better lit. I'm talking the campus, Central City, we should be adding more lighting there, but we can't do that if we're spending more on decorative poles instead of actually adding more lighting. Just got done with a presentation from the police chief in terms of quality of life issue impacting residents, a real quality of life issue. He didn't talk about that we don't have the resources to throw 10 more officers on the road. That could be paid for with this too, that type of money. So this is a real first world problem that we're talking about the color and the makeup of a telephone pole outside of our houses and spending that kind of money when we could, we don't have infinite resources. So I get it that people would like them to look nice and be uniform, but we gotta be practical about this too. And that's what came out of the January 23rd was the practical approach of, I can't sit there and justify to anyone spending that kind of money long-term because it wasn't just about the 10 that we had to make the decision on then. It was about the several hundred that were in line over the next several years that WPS is gonna work on. So instead of, and why should we select one space to be better than another space? So is it equitable solution and a fair and reasonable one? I'm probably gonna get some flack for that, but that's fine. Customer member Larson.
No flack. I just wanted to be clear that I'm not advocating the city spend any money for these. I'm advocating that the people who live there have some sort of say in what happens and some sort of recourse to control it. Because what we're saying collectively is we can't do anything about it. They're poles. They're gonna do what they want. But that's not true because there is other recourse here. And when this was presented, there were other actions and other options presented, we just chose not to take them. I'm just saying I'd like to choose to take those now or let those people have a say in it because it matters to them, first world problem or otherwise. Doesn't matter what we think about it. It matters to the people who live there.
Customer Floem.
I'd like to follow that up.
Customer Nichols.
This is an issue for these neighbors. If they want to pay more for a light pole, they can. I'm not saying the city needs to shell out more money for that.
Customer Nichols.
Yeah. So just to wrap it up, I think, and not to speak for anybody else that wants to talk, but I think we do want to look at light districts. So if you're looking for knotted heads, I think maybe that's what we're thinking about.
You beat me to the punch.
Sorry.
So I mean, is there a consensus? I think Mr. Floem says that. I'm not sure about everybody. That's, we can come back with a policy, you know, proposal for you to consider.
And just to understand costs and ways that we can recoup that cost because, to the mayor's point, $1.6 million, I think is something that isn't going to get past this council is my guess, but I'm not gonna speak for everybody else. But if we can recoup those costs in other ways and it could be community focused, that'd be something that I'd be interested in understanding better.
The word there, we've just wrestled with this, it's really gonna be about assessments. That's the word that's commonly used. So special charge, they might correct me and say it's a special charge, but special charge assessment, that's, and then neighbors, it gets interesting because the people who, they're gonna have people on both sides of this issue, I guarantee it. But that's, that's why you get paid the big bucks. Yeah, because that'll be, that'll be an issue you guys will have to wrestle with, but it's certainly worthy. You know, Chris's point earlier, and I think that's part of it is, you know, normally after a workshop, we come back and say, all right, you've had some time to think about it. Because WPS was looking for that quick answer, you know, we needed to give them a quick answer and I don't think we ever did the follow-up. So what DJ's talking about, I think we owe it to you guys to bring it back. You don't have to act on it, but you can at least talk about it. Does that sound, I mean, it was his idea. I just agree.
That sounds good. Sounds like that's what most would like to see. Excellent. If there's nothing else on that topic. Onto 37C. This is by council member Esslinger. Do have a member of the public still here registered to speak on it, asking the public if they want to continue with the city manager form of government. Mr. Palmieri is still here. Welcome again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try real hard to stay to five minutes. Let me just start off by saying I'm speaking just for myself. I'm not speaking for any movement. I'm not speaking for former mayor Lori Palmieri. She requested that I say that. So my thoughts are my own. And I please do not want anything that I say to be interpreted as a criticism of Mr. Roloff because it's not. I was on the city council when we hired him and I think he's done some great things. He's done some things that I've been disappointed by, but I have never doubted that he loves this city and comes to work each day trying to do what he can to help make it better. So for me, this issue has nothing to do with the person who's in the position. What I really would like all of you to appreciate is that in this form of government, it's only when the city manager retires or resigns or is fired that we have an opportunity as a community to do some assessment. Is this what we want? And I just feel that this council doesn't seem to have an interest in that. Basically, according to state law, we have three choices. We have the council manager, which as we heard earlier, there are 10 cities in Wisconsin that are council manager. Oshkosh, Fond du Lac, Eau Claire, Janesville, Beloit, Whitewater, Two Rivers, Fort Atkinson, Platteville and Lake Mills. Those are the city manager cities. A much, much bigger majority of cities use what's called a mayor council administrator. That's when you hire, or I'm sorry, you elect a mayor with some level of executive power and then you also hire an administrator. And cities that you would recognize include Kenosha, West Bend, Waukesha and Meckuan uses that form of government where they have a mayor with some level of executive power and a hired administrator. Many people like that form of government because they think it brings in the best of both worlds. For people who want the elected executive, they get that. For people who want the quote unquote professional administrator, they get that also. Some cities have a mayor, council and no administrator. They basically elect a strong mayor to do what Mr. Roloff does. And that would include, you know, cities like Appleton, Nina, Minasha and others. I personally support the hybrid model of the mayor with the executive power and the professional administrator. I believe that is the form of government in this state that is the most responsive, accountable and transparent. I completely appreciate that people of goodwill disagree with that. My frustration is that this council is moving full speed forward without, you all say you want engagement, but you don't want engagement on this topic to find out if people actually do want the form of government. And I could kind of understand that. We've now had the city manager form for almost 70 years. And when it's been around for that long, many people in the city don't know any other form. People that have been around for a while get very attached to it in a kind of ego type of way. But there have been cities that have abandoned the city manager plan. Kenosha adopted it in 1922 and they abandoned it in 1958. Madison adopted the city manager plan in 1947. They got rid of it in 1951. All right? And Stevens Point adopted it in 1928 and they abandoned it in 1936. So it can be changed. I like electing mayors personally. I believe that mayoral elections for mayors that have some kind of executive power are the best ways to get community engagement on competing visions for the city, where do we want to go. Minasha just had a great mayoral election between Austin Hammond and Rebecca Nichols, two outstanding candidates. Austin Hammond won. He's 25 years old, running a city with an $80 million a year budget. Nina, Jane Lang and my former student, Brian Borchert, that was an outstanding election. Two public servants in that community that have done great things. Jane Lang won that. I think she's doing a really great job as Nina mayor. Green Bay, Eric Genrich versus Chad Wininger, that was a mayoral election that brought two very distinct competing visions. Just another minute, Mr. Mayor. Wausau, Katie Rosenberg versus Doug Denny. And Appleton has Mayor Jake Woodford, who has led on many of the issues that many of you claim that you're very concerned with. Now, what I would like to encourage the city council to do before going full steam ahead on the city manager search is to spend some time educating the public. You know, in places like Tacoma, Washington and Cambridge, Massachusetts, they actually appoint citizen commissions that engage in what's called charter review. And then, and basically the citizens are given these three choices that I told you, you know, council manager, mayor administrator, mayor no administrator. And the citizen commissions are told, make a recommendation. Should we stay where we are? Right? Keep it the way it is? Should we move to a different form of government? I don't expect that this council would create something like that, but I don't think there's anything preventing you at a minimum from at least having a couple of workshops where we can at least try and educate the public about what the alternatives are. And if the council won't do that, then I would plead with at least a few counselors, I know Mr. Esslinger is most likely to do this, just organize a couple of town forums where you can have people come and talk about the change of government. Some of you on the council believe that just having this discussion will discourage people from applying to be the city manager. And I find that very, very disturbing. Are you suggesting that we should suspend democracy because we don't want to offend someone that might apply to be our city manager? All right? Are city manager candidates snowflakes? I mean, can they not, can they not listen to this kind of discussion? Right? I mean, the fact of the matter is there are many, many people in this community who are interested in alternatives. It doesn't mean we have to move toward one, but to prevent the discussion from taking place, I think is an abdication of our responsibility as community leaders. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Councilmember Esslinger, your topic.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. It's kind of late in the hour and so I'm not gonna be long-winded on this. I appreciate Professor Palmieri's comments. My thought on this is, you know, as we know, city manager Roloff is leaving and I think this is a good time to, instead of hitting the accelerator through the floorboard, to try to come up with a new city manager. And maybe we want to do that. Maybe that's what the community wants. I don't know. But I thought this is a good time to ask the residents if that's what they want. I find it interesting. We just took about roughly a half an hour talking about whether we should ask residents what type of light pole they want. And I think we should. I think that's a great idea. That's citizen input, right? I mean, what do you want in front of your house? But asking people if they like their form of government? Oh, no. No, 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 we can't do that. That's burdensome or something. I don't know. And so when I propose this, of course you have the roadblocks that go up. I call them excuses. And one is, at the least, it's kind of funny. I won't think, I won't say what I really think it is. But it was the thought that during council elections, all of us up here at some point in time discussed what type of government we like. And I'm the only one that appreciates, I think, as Professor Palmieri said, something else. And so this person, a former council member, Professor Ford, said that while the people went out and voted and the majority of the council members that expressed that they liked the council manager form of government got elected. And so therefore, the citizens have told you that this is what they want. Well, that's a specious argument. That makes absolutely no sense because at any point in time when you're running for office, there are a plethora of questions that are asked of a candidate and they answer them. And so when you go to the poll, maybe that is why someone voted because they like the former governor, whatever candidate they like, likes that former governor. Maybe they voted for someone because they didn't want a wheel tax. Maybe they voted for someone because they liked the wheel tax and they're candidate, I mean, so there's a million different reasons why people vote for the candidate they want. So to somehow say that, we've asked the public because these are the people that they've elected, I guess you lost me on that. We did vote tonight. And so, you know, I wanted to, I was thinking about a referendum, but we've now found out that that, the brilliant brain surgeons at the state will not allow us to do this. We can't ask the people what they want for their government either. You know, when we do run for these, candidates always, always in some way, shape or form, they always say, I want to listen to the people. Always. Listen to people. I mean, I've never heard of a candidate say, no, I don't want to listen to anyone. I'm gonna do what I want to do and, but vote for me. And so, you know, they get elected and unfortunately, they kind of just do whatever they want to do. And in the many, many years that I've been an elected official, I hear and it really frustrates me, I hear a lot of people say, you know, these politicians and whether it's council members or state assembly or federal government, I hear people say, you know, you elect them and then they just do whatever they want to do. They don't listen. And I get frustrated because, I don't know, I think I listen. Unfortunately, I think what we're gonna find tonight is we're gonna prove them right. We're gonna say, well, no, I listened because I asked you what kind of light pole you wanted out in front of your house, but I didn't care what kind of government you wanted. So I guess I listened. We've hired a firm here tonight. The gentleman came up and talked and we voted in favor of that. So I still would like to gauge the interest of the folks. I don't know if the gentleman in his firm, he says that they kind of handcraft whatever you want done. I don't know, maybe is it possible that this firm that we have just now hired can have a public discussion with the folk or have some type of questionnaire or whatever and actually gauge the public? I don't think that would take too much time. It may, you know, it takes a month. And again, I don't know what hurry we are in. We talked to the assistant city manager, Mr. Fitzpatrick in executive session and he said, I'm here for you guys, you know, whatever it takes. And quite frankly, Mr. Fitzpatrick's been here longer than Mr. Roloff. So if it takes us a while to get another city manager, I'm okay with that. I think we are, we would be in great hands with Mr. Fitzpatrick if he had to sit in for a month, two months, however many months. It doesn't matter to me. But I just, and I'm kind of disappointed actually for the citizens because they do feel that they're shut out once. And then when someone does get elected, then they do what they want to do until it comes time to get reelected if they run again. Then all of a sudden, they're worried about, they want to listen to what the folks have to say. So it just creates a cycle. It's nonsense. So I don't know, I'm gonna pass it off to the rest of the council here, but I still would like to see if the gentleman here can do that with his firm to first find out if that's what folks want to do. I know the city has, I just found out, some type of program where they can send out a questionnaire in some form. So I don't think, but let's just, let's take our foot off the accelerator. We aren't in no hurry. I don't think we're racing anyone. And, you know, the two things that we, council, that we do up here, the most important is pass a budget and we deal with the city managed position. Well, that's what we're dealing with now. I mean, this is, this is important stuff. So if you feel that you have a gauge of the public and you feel comfortable with that, that's fine. You're entitled to that. But But I'm just curious, what are we so worried about if we ask this question? And I think the answer to that is, we know what the answer is going to be. And when we find out what the answer is, now we got to find out what the public really wants. Okay, you don't want to do this anymore. What do you want? And then council members are going to have to work. They're going to have to have public meetings, and they're going to have to have discussion. And they're going to have arguments over what they want. But that's what you sign up for. That's part of the job, right? I mean, if you didn't like that, if you can't do the job, if you don't like that, don't sign up. You know, it's really that simple. So I've gone on probably too long, so this is really, I don't, simple. This isn't even about what form of government you want. That's a, that's a discussion and argument for another day. This is, do you like what we have, and do you want to continue? No more and no less. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols, followed by Councilmember Larson.
Thank you. And, and I really appreciate, honestly, Councilmember Esslinger for bringing this up. I think that having these conversations in a public setting are important. I appreciate Professor Palmieri bringing up and providing his feedback. I think they're valuable conversations to have. And like I've said before, the seven of us probably, we can't tell by looking at us, but we probably couldn't be more different than each other. That was a joke.
It's always nice of you to tell us.
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry.
Can you explain?
It's getting later in the day.
A little slower.
But, but one of the things that, there have been a couple of things said that I think I just want to clarify a little bit. We've talked about hesitation to work by council with public meetings, discussion work. I know all of us are willing to do that. We're doing that right now. We're saying, it's nine o'clock, and we're still here, and we're talking about it. We've talked about suspending democracy and snowflakes, and I think that that is rhetoric. And I know it comes from a place of passion and a belief system, and I don't think that's a bad thing. But I do want to clarify just one thing that was said that I don't know it was completely accurate. And really, that is that we only have the time to discuss changing our form of government when there's a resignation, or termination, or retirement of the city manager. And that's just not true. We can talk about that whenever we want to. There are multiple mechanisms to do that. The council can do that whenever we want to. We can raise our hands, as we're being requested to today, and say, we want to do this. We can, the public can do it through a number of, a petition that would go to a referendum. That can happen at any time, and that doesn't have to be council-led. So I just want to clarify that this is not a one-time opportunity. This is a convenient touch point that I think I'm hearing from people, but I don't think it's necessary. The other thing I'll mention is, I've lived in three different cities in three different states, ranging from 66,000 to 9 million. And I've never been asked, what form of government do I wish to have? And not that I think that that's a bad question. I mean, I think that's part of what the country was founded on. But I've never been needed to ask that, because the way that it's operating is very functional. The city manager rolloff has done an exceptional job in its 16 years. I think all, all seven of us will nod our heads to that. And I think that we've seen that other communities haven't done as well as Oshkosh has. And do I think that that's purely because our city manager form of government? No. Do I think that it's purely because of city manager rolloff? No. But I think those two things working together went a long way to help those things. I think that, as we think about a delay, and a hesitation, and hiring a firm tonight, do I think that's too fast? Not at all. We have one employee as a seven-member council. And I think we need to start looking for the best option there, just in case we do get five options, and we say, none of these work. We need to keep looking. I appreciate that Fitz is willing to stay on as interim for a period of time, but I'm sure Fitz would prefer not to, if he doesn't have to. So, so I just want to clarify those things. I don't think this is a hesitation to work by council. I don't think that's just an affront to democracy. I think that all of us have a duty to ask about light poles. I think we all have a duty to ask about government. I think we all have a duty to ask if we're being effective in our roles. And I think we're doing that. And I'm not hearing that we need to change the government in order to be better at those things. So, thanks.
Councilmember Larson, followed by Councilmember Flohm.
I'll echo a lot of the same. And Paul, I really do appreciate your bringing it forward. I know you and I talked about it as well. And it's a, this has been really tough for me, because I, I am about transparency. I love conversations about this, and this is an important one to have. Professor Palmieri, to your point, and to reiterate what DJ said, I think we could have this conversation anytime the public wants to. What sways me towards moving forward, and that we can, I mean, well, that's part of what I'm getting at. The last time we had it was driven by a certain direction, and that's why I keep coming back to. Because it is hard for me to decide that. It's different than a lamppost for a lot of reasons. Primarily because this is a big and disruptive thing in theory, and we don't need to necessarily change it. But for me, what I keep coming back to, it's personal, and I try not to take my personal opinion of this very often, and part of it is listening to what people said also. But the times where this does come up, there's precedent for it. You gave some examples of ways that this can be done, that a council can initiate it, that, and all of my research, and you're the professor, so I don't know anywhere near as well as you do, but I can't find a single instance where this happened. It's always driven by the public having the conversation, because the mechanism is really easy at referendum for the, for the public to ask for that when they want to ask for that. When it's come up here, that's how it's happened, at least according to the memo we got today. And that, for me, is the part where, if it's going to happen, I think that's the right way, and I'd be supportive of it and hearing all of that. That's great. But I think driving it from here is too much for me.
Councilmember Flohm.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Councilman Esslinger for bringing this up. The important thing for me is, the reason why I want to get started on having these public forums is so citizens can engage in that conversation. A council can engage in this conversation anytime it wants to, but at the same time, the most logical way forward, if citizens are motivated to do this, would be during these conversations, when you're hiring a new city manager. And on top of that, then they would have to go forward with a referendum. We can't do an advisory referendum anymore. And I know that may sound like a cop-out, but we can't do that. And so if this is something that citizens want to get together, and they want to have that conversation, they need to have that and carry that forward. You know, frankly, I don't think anybody here signed up for this job saying they don't want to do it. Preferably, all of us would like to hear the citizens as much as we want to, and I have heard complaints about the former government, but at the same time, it's incumbent upon the citizens to take that up. I do think that if council has decided to do something and just have a five-vote majority, go ahead with a different form of government, that's essentially astroturfing it. And so, right now, I have heard some complaints, but at the end of the day, it seems like most people are satisfied with this. But again, that's up to the citizens themselves. And so this opportunity is a great time for citizens to have those conversations. And so they will be, they will be able to meet the city manager candidates. They will be able to talk with them. They will be able to see what their priorities are, what they want to do, if their priority is economic development, a sound budget, diversity. It doesn't really matter what those are, as long as citizens are satiated with those. And if they want to go forward in a different direction, that's incumbent upon them. And so for me, I think all of us here, all seven of us here, are very eager to get the input from the citizenry, and we would like to know what they think. That's why we want to have these public forums. That's why I really, seriously hope that with this firm that we hired, we can engage in those conversations. So for me, the reason why I'm excited about this search is because citizens can open this up to a broader conversation if they would like to. But ultimately, this needs to be a citizen-led process if they want to go ahead and do that. For my part, I think the city manager search is an exciting time, the first time we've been able to do this in 16 years. And so if citizens are not happy with the candidates, they can go in their own direction. But, you know, frankly, having council just go forward and push a different direction because it feels like it is incomplete. So honestly, the point for me is that if we're going to go ahead and have a new city manager search, which we've done, I would like to see citizens engage in that as much as possible, and at the end of the day, it's incumbent upon them.
Councilmember Esslinger.
Yeah, just to follow up, Mayor. I don't think I disagree with really anything, my good friends here, seriously, and I mean that seriously. You know, all these guys up here I like. But again, I guess I feel bad for the citizen again. Councilmember Flohm and Councilmember Larson are correct that the citizens can come forward and do this. I just want to talk a little bit about that. So if you're out there and you're upset, and you do want to come forward, here's what you need to do, Mr. and Mrs. Citizen. You need to form a committee, and you have to name that committee, and you have to go down to the city clerk's office, I believe, and you have to explain what you're doing. And then they will inform you that you have to have a question, I believe, on the petition that you're going to go out and get. You have a timeframe to go out and get the signatures for that. Oh, and oh, by the way, you need to get about 3,600 signatures in that timeframe. Then you have to turn all of those signatures in for the review of the city clerk and her staff. And if you, and some of those can be checked out if they don't match, you know, if you're not a city resident, and whatever. And then there'll probably be some challenges, or, I mean, so again, roadblocks, roadblocks, roadblocks. And as a, as a member of the council that I want to make things easier, I just wanted to get rid of a fire pit fee tonight, and there was a discussion about that. So I want to make things easier for the residents. Can you go out and do this, Mr. and Mrs. Resident? Yes, you can. Good luck. Thank you.
It's worth noting, everything that Councilman Esslinger said there is accurate, and it's all dictated by the state of Wisconsin. Not a single one of those things is governed or changeable by us, the seven individuals sitting up here. I hope my colleagues will join me, at least most will join me in expressing to the pool of candidates who have already started watching and will continue to watch this governing body over the next several months, to determine if they're going to find interest in this role. That the city manager form of government is, is good, it's strong, and it's what's right for Oshkosh, and that this body speaks with one voice and says, it's what we want, and it's what we need to move us forward. It is the best form of government that the city of Oshkosh could possibly have. I'll say it, and I hope federal council members will, will join me in making sure that that message is clear to those who may consider this as a, as a next employment opportunity. This is, this is not something small. This is, this will be the best opportunity most of these individuals will apply for in their careers. This is not a stepping stone. This is a final landing spot for hopefully our next candidate. So with that, if there's any other comments, hopefully they'll see some head nodding if they're watching, so. With that, we'll move on to future agenda items. Contract for EMS services outside the city of Oshkosh, an impact on need for fourth ambulance unit August 27th. That is an in-meeting workshop.
Yeah, Chief Stanley's prepared to make a presentation to council regarding the ambulance units contract.
Also, that meeting will have the presentation on our 2023 annual comprehensive financial report from Kerber Rose. Generally, that was part of a, its own workshop, or part of a workshop, but I think it's some discussion we've had in the past.
It was part of the next day's workshop, and we want to get you a little more, we want to get you more bang for your buck in the, in the Wednesday workshop, so we figured we'd add it here.
And for both of those, in terms of just having two, could be lengthy, or at least they'll, you know, the minutes will add up, we'll have information in enough advance for us to, because those two things don't necessarily have to wait for an agenda to come out. We could have that potentially earlier?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other future agenda items, we'll move.
I do have one, yeah. I kind of talked to Mark a little bit about this ahead of time, but I, we previously had a, when Mike Ford was up here, we talked a little bit about deferred assessments. I would like to get a workshop together to see if we can hash that out, we can come up with some solutions as it relates to, I know we've had people and annexations and stuff asking us a little bit about this, so I'd like to have a bigger discussion on that topic with the council and get staff's perspective as well.
Yeah, I think it was really more about payment terms and things like that, terms of, of that, and not necessarily deferring, but, but we'll have that, we're working on that.
Sure. Any other future agenda items? Councilmember Flohm.
I would just like to echo Councilmember Stevenson's point on this one, because I think it's about time we finally talk about developing a policy for this. There are residents that are getting hit with massive annexation assessments for water and sewer laterals, so I think it's about time we have that discussion.
Okay. Future meetings and workshops, budget workshop number two, early projections, directions on priorities from council. That'll be August 28th at 5:00, so we've got a back-to-back council meeting on Tuesday night and a workshop on Wednesday night. That'll be 5:00 PM, roughly runs till 7-ish. Those workshops usually run about two hours unless we're able to wrap up earlier. And then still to be determined, undergrounding utilities.
Yep, nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Any council member announcements or statements that they'd like to make? Councilmember Nichols.
Thanks. I just want to mention that Winnebago County Health Department has been notified that there's been a spike in suspected overdose deaths over the last several weeks. You can visit the Health Department Facebook page to get more information, but I also want to mention that you can pick up Narcan LifePoint Serend Services and test trips for fentanyl free of charge at the Winnebago County Public Health Department, and that's located at 112 Otter Avenue on the second floor. Thanks.
Well, thank you for bringing it up. That's a very important public service. Thank you. Councilmember Flohm.
Just want to announce that, and promote Oshkosh Jazz Fest, which will be happening on August 24th from noon to 6:00 on Main Street. So if you like jazz, it's a free concert, come on down.
You seem like a jazz guy. Any other announcements or statements from council? Otherwise, we'll turn our rest over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple memos in your pack. One is with AECOM, this basically gets us started on our environmental geotechnical review in advance of our 2025 and 2026 projected, primarily street projects. So we just get moving on that, so that in case we find any surprises, then we, we get prepared for that. We have been working on the public library, doing some re-roofing there. We found a problem during the course of that construction, so given the fact that the contractor was there, and it was causing some immediate damage to the library, I authorized an emergency purchase. It was pretty much a change order to the existing contract. So it was 38,000, or 34,380. So by, by code, I'm required to report that to council, and I, Mr. Essler was here for a while, but I think it's, it's made, it's made its improvement and had its impact, so that, he's very appreciative of that. Strategic plan dashboards for the second quarter is up there for, for you to take a look at. If you've got any questions, contact Mr. Fitzpatrick or myself, or, you know, even one of the departments if you've got a question about something in there. And then I got outstanding issues in there. The parking issue was discussed by the Transportation Committee last night, so it'll be on your August 27th agenda. So we will have quite a few things on the 27th agenda.
Sounds like a good, good night. Thank council members for having a good discussion tonight, several good topics. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. You can adjourn.